I'd like to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting to order. At this time, we will turn it over to our principal, Janet Loftus, to give her School Improvement Plan for Lincoln Hancock.
Thank you.
Just make sure your mic.
Ms. Tannen.
Yep. You're good.
Well, good evening, members of school committees, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, and the entire leadership team. I'm Janet Loftus, and I'm happy to be here to share all the wonderful things that go on at Lincoln Hancock and to discuss areas where we can improve our practice. I know you have a busy night, so for the sake of time, I'm diving right in. Lincoln Hancock is a school where all the data in the world does not begin to scratch the surface of giving an accurate portrayal of what it's like to be a member of the Pride. I could not be more proud of the work that gets done at our school. Our students know they're cared for, they're loved, and they will be successful. Our staff is doing an unbelievable job this year keeping the tone positive and supportive for our children and for each other, which sometimes is most important. Each year, as we look at data, one of the most consistent findings is that our strength is in our growth. No matter the assessment, the beginning-of-year-to-end-of-year data is outstanding. I'm grateful to the entire staff and our building for meeting our children right where they are and for facilitating the amount of growth we see. Our MCAS accountability rating for this year remains substantial progress towards goals. Over the past four years, we've gone from a rating of 49% to 67%, and I'm very proud of that. On MCAS, our ELA mean growth improved 53.2% this past year. Our math mean growth improved to 66.8% this year. The one area we will need to focus on is our English language learners, which is reflected in our ELA goal. We're continuing to make strides with our attendance. Post-COVID, we were at 23.8% of our students listed as chronically absent. Four years later, we're down to 18%. I'm holding my ground at 9% as our goal. I think we can do it. Our MAP growth continues to be an area we celebrate at Lincoln Hancock. Our growth has continued to surpass the norms projected at each grade level from fall to spring. In regards to last year's goals, I'm continuing to look at our data through a multi-year lens in order to find trends and to be able to accurately reflect on some of the systematic changes we've made, such as scheduling and flexible grouping. We met almost every goal we set in last year's SIP and will continue to monitor MAP results in grades three to four for math, ELA, and science, and have raised our growth targets to align with the trends we've observed. And we are maintaining our focus on individual growth projection goals, an approach that produced positive outcomes last year. Additionally, we'll continue to include an ELA M-class goal in K-2, but we are shifting it to focus on the correct letter-sound subcategory instead of looking at the composite scores. We want to encourage a year-long effort to purposefully focus on this foundational skill of reading development in the lower grades to help increase achievement in the years to come, especially for our English language learners. As an example, last fall, only 28% of all kindergartners were at or above the beginning-of-year benchmark in letter-sound subcategory. By the end of the year, 68% of those kids were at benchmark. In looking at our kindergarten ELs, 5% of our EL kindergartners were at that benchmark in the fall. By the end of the year, they were at 47%. We make great progress, but from where we start, there's a lot to cover. While our academic achievement is always the forefront of our goals, we are going to continue to prioritize our fourth goal, which is the social-emotional learning goal. As a staff, we are continuing to enhance the quality of our outreach and partnerships with our students' families. This improvement in communication will be monitored through the use of two family feedback surveys given in the beginning and end of the school year. What we have all come to agree upon is that SEL does not happen effectively as an independent entity. Our PBIS system, restorative justice program, and the new kernels program, they all work together within the school building to create a safe and supportive culture. We're excited to have this new kernels program in our school, and our work group team is thrilled to collaborate with the consultants in order to build this program up in our school. There's such a need for trauma-informed teaching and supports, and I have no doubt we will find this new program very beneficial as we embed it into our practice. We'll continue to focus on utilizing the tracking of our Purple Paws and office referrals, as well as the vocal data. I'm currently working with my school council on how to help incoming new families feel more in the know when they join our community. I would be remiss if I did not mention how integral my student support team is, which includes my assistant principal, Ms. Roy, and my guidance and nursing staff. The amount of support they provide behind the scenes is second to none and would be lost without them and all their hard work. It's because of them we'll be able to reach our SEL goal. Like I mentioned, in past years, Lincoln Hancock is challenging. It's a monster of a building. From its physical size, no doors or real walls, it's something. Our high needs and low-income percentages continue to remain high, which brings a lot of extra challenges for our children to have to work through before they can even access curriculum. I need to stop and specifically thank the superintendent's leadership team for their support this past fall. They have not hesitated to consult and meet and assist where it's been needed, and it's been beyond appreciated. Lincoln Hancock's a school that offers so much. Our parent-teacher committee continues to support our school and neighborhood through many free events. Our trunk-or-treat was outstanding again this year, and I know our multicultural night potluck will again be something the entire community will show up for. This year, our extended ed programs have taken off in a way I haven't seen in years. Our teachers really stepped up to enhance our students' experiences with this enrichment. The past two months, we offered 14 before- or after-school clubs in grades two to four, which serviced just about 200 of our kids, which is outstanding. I'll end with a quote from one of our teacher appreciation shout-outs from last year. "I had asked parents to fill out a form if they wanted to shout out a compliment that would be shared for our staff. I was overwhelmed with the responses and was able to fill 68 slides' worth of quotes from parents." But my favorite one was from a second-grade parent. It's simple, and it sums up everything we would hope a parent would feel. "Dear LH teachers, you truly care about your students and are making a huge impact. We are a team. My children love going to school." Thank you. I want to thank you for the chance to share our successes, our areas of improvement, and to show what it means to be the pride of Lincoln. I'm happy to answer any and all specific questions about our SIP from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoobley.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yep.
I loved your goals are great, and your action steps were really good. Especially loved, under your SEL goals, the role model of the month and the peer buddy groups. That's great to have in there. Appreciate that. And all of our facilities needs are going to go into the Facility Subcommittee, but I wanted to specifically point out, any safe, the new elevator? Is that like?
It's in the works. I know that the leadership team and everyone that needs to know about it knew about it last year. It is in working condition right now, but it is something that just is old, and the parts, they'll just need to work on. Yeah.
I can give you, I can give you another one. Make sure it's not like a safety issue, that it's not usable.
Right. So, that elevator was installed in the 1970s. Unfortunately, they don't make any parts for it anymore. So, it will have to be completely replaced, and Paul Hines is working on that procurement. He knows about it, and it's in the works.
Okay. And the gymnasium roof leaks. Is it becoming a safety issue at this point, or is that just a?
It's, you know, depending on how serious you are at basketball, there's some dead spots on the floor. But I know that Paul Hines and the team are working on that, too. It's just the solar panels are above the leak, so.
Okay. I just want to know, like, at what level we're at with it. So, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
Paul Hines is aware of that as well, and he's doing his best to fix it. The solar panels, as Principal Loftus indicated, do complicate things, but he's working on trying to resolve that issue with the plumbing expert that works for the city.
Okay, great. And back to the chronic absenteeism in the school. Now, this has been something that is, I want to go back historically. It's been somewhat of an issue, especially on the half-days. Are you seeing a different reason for the absenteeism now, or is it pretty much leveled the same reasons that you had been hearing for?
I would say it's leveled. Wednesdays, the half-days, you know, some people in our community, if they don't drive and they're not with, and the bus, you know, distance, may hesitate if the weather is bad. That's kind of the trend that we see. Not a huge trend, but that is one of the things that we've noticed. But it's getting so much better.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Perdios.
Thank you. Loftus. So, I definitely, the thing that stuck out the most to me was just the steady improvements and increases in just pretty much across the board for you guys, and I love that. You know, you don't expect, you know, black and white overnight, and you're just, the steady progress is fantastic, and it's just, and you can see the pride, the pride in your pride is coming through in the plan, so I appreciate that. I like also in your goals that you have the RIT increases, but you also have that individual growth projection goal kind of in there as well. I really like that piece. As I think Dr. Perkins pointed out, that's how we're going to kind of keep getting ahead, is to kind of push the envelope on those goals, the projections. So, I appreciate you, your attention to those and focusing on those. The extended day, I'm so glad that we have 200 kids in there. Do you have any opportunities or any plans to have any opportunities for, like, K, grade one, anything like that, or I guess grade one?
Yeah, so, we did this last year, and it seemed to work out really nice. The first session, we did the older kids, two to four. Our second session will be focused, there'll still be two to four clubs, because we have a lot that the kids love, but we'll shift down now. The kids are acclimated, their stamina's a little bit higher for a long day, so the next session will be geared more towards K-2.
Okay, that's great. I didn't see that in there, so I'm glad that those are going to be incorporated. That's great. I just wanted to ask you, on your REACH program, it looked like you only have nine kids in the REACH program there. Is that, it's like an 8% inclusion rate? I think when we were hoping for, kind of planning REACH, I think we were hoping for up to 20% of kiddos to be in there. Is there, were kiddos opting out, or was it just?
No, I thought we were, I could be absolutely wrong in saying this. I thought we were at about 10%, and right now, my fourth grade is at about 94, 95 students.
Okay.
I could be wrong with that percentage, but.
I could be, I could be wrong. I could.
I think when it was polled, there might have been, like, some move-outs.
Got you. Got you. Okay. That's great.
And we did add one in because of a move-out, and that was really appreciated, that we were able to have that flexibility.
Okay, that's great. And the last thing I have on here, family feedback surveys, I'm really glad about that, that, you know, it gets that data that you're, sometimes it's difficult to get. Like you said, the reasoning's on the attendance for the half-days, different things like that, you can get that info. So, I'm so glad you're doing that. And then Chromebooks, again, with the Chromebooks, we had heard in the IT program proven plan that we seem to have plenty of them, so having it be a need for them, and there's a number of them that mention Chromebooks, if we can kind of shuffle some over to them.
Yeah, it's the K-2 primarily because of the ST math and the other things that are on the computers. So, the issue isn't just the Chromebooks, it's also the charging of the Chromebooks, because we don't want cords, like, running across classrooms. So, we really potentially should look at, like, carts and things like that, because these aren't kids who are going to take them home, right? So, it would be better if we, so, we're working with IT on the best way to accommodate that. But I think the, it's, the Chromebooks, yes, but it's also the charging of them, because they don't have the plugs, though these classrooms were not built, like, you know, like, since some of our newer buildings with plugs everywhere, so, you know. So, it's just a little bit of a work in progress.
Yeah, no, that's great. That'll save time that I won't mention every single one that mentions Chromebooks. You know I have the concern when I see it, if we need them, and we seem to have plenty, let's get them where they need to be.
We're working on it.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. I have to agree, I think that, you know, you are, the building is a beast, you have a crowd in there, and very, very, probably the most diverse school in our city, and you're just doing such a great job, all of you there, so I'm so, I'm so proud of that. I have a couple of questions, just because I didn't quite understand them. What is a Vista assessment?
It's the new curriculum that our EL students across elementary have. Part of the new curriculum is that they do have assessments embedded for beginning of the, excuse me, middle and end of year, where you can look at progress monitor. It also helps level the students for what units and skills they're ready for, which is a little bit more accurate than the access scores from the prior January. So, you know, it's new, we're working it out, seeing, you know, systematically how it's going to go.
And my other question is, how do students access Lexia at home?
We hope if they have it, they are able to access it, if they have Chromebooks, if they have devices. We do the majority of ST math, Lexia in school. I, as a parent, I have, my child brings a Chromebook home, he's in first grade, and it makes me crazy, to be honest. I don't want that. So, it's interesting, I know right now, my teachers solely leave it within the classroom, embedded within the day, so that everyone has equal access. Actually, tomorrow night, our Wednesday night, we're giving golden tickets for ST math for children that have earned to do it at home if they want to, because we really have kept it at school to be able to monitor and support.
Yep. And I love the fact that you're differentiating homework in math. I think that's incredible. That's so important to be able to move kids along who are ready to be moved along and also support kids who, because sometimes that math homework comes home for some kids, and it's like, really?
Yeah.
I could do this in my sleep.
Right.
So, I'm so, I was thrilled to see that. I love the shout-outs, and I love the family survey as well. The Staff Culture Committee, you know, not too many people think about that, but that's really important. It really is important.
It's having way more of an impact than I would have realized, to be honest.
That's great. It really is. The class size is wonderful, your MAP growth data is wonderful, so you guys are doing a terrific job down there. A difficult situation, besides the building, the crowd, but great job. So, entertain a motion to accept this, with all in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Janet.
Oh, right on time. It won't last. Good evening, Ms. McNeil. So, good to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
And you can start right away.
All right.
With your plan.
Well, first of all, thank you for your time. I'm glad to be here this evening and so proud to be the principal of Parker School and present our School Improvement Plan to you this evening. When preparing for this presentation, I again thought of our motto, "Be kind, be responsible, be the best you can be, the choice is yours." This motto is shared quite loudly by our students at every assembly. First, be kind. Being kind helps students both be a friend and make friends at Parker. This was emphasized at a recent assembly where first graders sang a song about gratitude. Quincy Public Schools is celebrating a month of gratitude, and I certainly am grateful, grateful for the teachers, children, and families of Parker. Kindness is the culture at Parker. Because of this, students are engaged with their friends and teachers, and families are engaged with Parker School. Family engagement activities include popsicles on the playground, trunk-or-treat, and we're looking forward to cocoa craft on Friday. Other family engagement activities include our Lunar New Year celebration and our Family Literacy Night. Because of our culture of kindness, there's a strong sense of community, and students are engaged beyond the school day. We're fortunate to offer many beyond-the-school-day clubs, including Peer Leaders, Run Club, STEM Club, Drama Club, Homework Club, LEGO Robotics. Run Club was a very popular fall activity. As a culminating activity, approximately 40 members of the Parker community, students, teachers, and families competed in the Boston Chinatown Neighborhood Center 5K that was held at Marymount Park. Although I didn't run, I was an enthusiastic fan, and everyone had a great time. Next, be responsible. Parker students are very responsible, and they take pride in their learning. We have very high standards for our students at Parker, but those high standards are balanced with a very high degree of support. There's a safety net for students in need of intervention. Intervention groups are small, flexible, and data-driven. Our ILT process allows teams of teachers to work together, to identify students in need of support, and plan appropriate intervention. Through the support of the superintendent and his leadership team and this school committee, we're fortunate to have an extensive support system for Parker students. This allows our students to be responsible and achieve their very best. Intervention at Parker includes two literacy teachers, a part-time math interventionist, and the support of four ELI teachers. Additionally, we have two guidance counselors supporting the social and emotional needs of our students. Parker students are responsible, and through your support, they have the support they need to achieve their best. Lastly, be the best you can be, the choice is yours. This means Parker students are taught the skills and knowledge they need to be successful and are given the support they need to achieve their very best. This is absolutely true at Parker. Parker is fortunate to have a great team of highly qualified and caring teachers who give their very best. Be the best you can be means teachers have the support they need to do their best to teach the students. This means partnering with parents to support students and engage families in their children's education. This means celebrating the rich culture, traditions, and diversity of Parker. Be the best you can be also means committing to continuous improvement, and that's why we're here tonight, presenting our School Improvement Plan and committing to goals and action steps that will bring about lasting improvement. Our students will shout our motto, and I agree with them. Parker students are kind, they are responsible, and they are the best. I am grateful and proud to be their principal and to share our School Improvement Plan with you this evening. Assessment results provide a snapshot of student performance during the spring of 2025 and show there's work to be done. While some grade levels show progress, other grade levels show gaps in skills that are addressed through our action steps. In the area of ELA, some grade levels show progress, and other grade levels show some gaps in foundational skills that need to be addressed. 27% of third graders are meeting or exceeding expectations. This is below the state average and does represent a decline. 38% of fourth graders are meeting or exceeding expectation, and this is comparable to the state average. 47% of fifth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations, and this is above the state average by 9%. In the area of mathematics, 45% of third graders are meeting or exceeding expectation, and this is comparable to the state average. 49% of fourth graders are meeting or exceeding expectation, and again, this is above the state average, and 65% of fifth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations and represents a significant increase of 32% when compared to 2024 results. In the area of science, 57% of fifth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations, and this reflects a 13% increase when compared to 2024 results. Our goals and action steps at Parker are a real team effort. Teachers work in teams to analyze data and differentiate instruction. Looking ahead, Parker teachers will continue to support students' academic, social, and emotional growth. As we work towards this, specific focus will be given to how we can provide intervention to accelerate student learning. This is especially true for our high-needs population, including English language learners. We have proposed ambitious goals using MCAS, MAP, and DIBELS to document student progress. Parker teacher teams have developed action steps to meet these goals, and there is an emphasis on writing across the curriculum. Highlights of our action step include the ELA goal being supported across all subject areas. Other action steps include differentiated reading instruction targeted across all grade levels, and again, an emphasis on writing to improve students' ability to write across genre and across the curriculum. Our math goal emphasizes geometry, measurement, and data. As teachers continue to implement a core resource, it's important to collaborate and examine pacing to ensure sufficient instructional time is devoted to these topics. Students will continue to use math journals and emphasize writing about multiple ways to solve a problem. Teachers at all grade levels will continue to use data-driven, flexible, and differentiated groups to support students. Additionally, we are fortunate to work with a math interventionist to support our students. The science goal is supported by integrating inquiry-based, hands-on activities. In the area of social and emotional learning, we will, we are implementing kernels, which teachers are very excited about. Also, our work with the trauma-sensitive schools, and continuing implementation of restorative circles and community circles. SEL supports for our students include continued implementation of PBIS, guidance lessons, check-in, checkout, et cetera. To conclude, Parker School has wonderful students, supportive families, and caring teachers. It is a vibrant school community, and I am grateful and proud to be the principal. Thank you for your continued support. Be kind, be responsible, be the best you can be.
Thank you. Mr. Bergoli.
I had the pleasure of working with Margaret for several years at Marymount, and I know how hard she works, and the results of your data increasing throughout the curriculum is impressive.
Oh, thank you.
And I know that's a direct result of your hard work.
Well, no, it's a team.
And the.
But thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Perdios.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal McNeil. This is, this is a great plan to read, and I know from being in your building, it wasn't a surprise, but just what came across to me was just that, especially from the vocal data, just how happy and safe your kiddos felt there. And it's just, it's always such a happy building when you walk in, and it's just, you can feel the love in the building, so it's, you're doing a great job there. And thank you also for coming back this week. I know last week you were slated to come, so thank you for making yourself available this week as well. I really appreciated the in-depth look at your data. You had a really deep dive in your data reflection, just not, like, met, not met on your goals, but just compared to state, across cohorts. You looked at it in a multitude of different ways, and you didn't sugarcoat it. It was just, these are the gaps, these are what we need to work on, these are our strengths, and you had, you know, some of each, but some really great achievements and really great successes. So, I appreciate that. I really like knowing, you know, exactly what's going on, so that's fantastic. And I have no doubt that with that deep, deep dive, that you have a plan, and the plan sounds great, and the action steps look solid. So, I appreciate the focus on the subgroups in your goals, the high needs in the EL, kind of bringing that to the forefront there. So, I'm excited to see what you have for next year and how that works out.
Me, too.
And I just wanted to ask about, I just wanted to ask about, my only question was on the extended-day programs for younger students. I didn't see any listed in here. Do you have anything for the younger kiddos?
We definitely have more for older grades, for sure. And I think we start with a clear plan for the older, not start with, but definitely have a clearer plan for the older grades. They have, they are oftentimes able to transition home from school independently, without a ride, et cetera. But we'll definitely have more coming. I know last year, we had a second-grade Erin Noonan-Ledan Irish Step dance troupe that was very well-attended. They'll come, they're just not there yet.
All right. That sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you very much. Your accountability data is great. It really is great, and I agree with Ms. Perdios, the way you looked at your data is great. And I love the fact that you're just not saying one MAP goal, that you're really looking at DIBELS and MAP and MCAS and really drilling down into what skills the students need. So, I really appreciate it. I have a couple of concerns, class size.
Class, we are busy. We're growing, for sure. And I think we had some enrollments that we weren't expecting. Through the support, we have an additional kindergarten class that was started after the school year, because we had a few more kiddos than we were expecting. We first grade are a little big, but we also have, again, through your support, thank you, the support of a, someone hired to reduce the instructional grouping size, so not another classroom. We don't have room, even if I wanted to open a classroom. We're busting at the seams.
A professional in the room helping to.
Yeah. To pull out small groups in ELA and math, and that's been helpful.
That's great, because it is, I mean, 24 kids in the first grade is definitely not something we want to see, but I'm glad you're getting the support you need, and did recognize it, too. My other question was, and this is really for the superintendent, why aren't the high school carpentry students finishing that shed for them? It's been on their list for years.
We can certainly ask them to do that.
We have carpentry students at both schools. If your shed hasn't been finished in two years, I mean, we should ask them.
We can certainly do that.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept this School Improvement Plan by Mrs. Hoobley, seconded by Mr. Bergoli. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. You can start.
Thank you.
Mr. Dionne.
I thank you all for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'm so excited to share all the wonderful things happening at Bernazani this year. I would like to start with a story from a longtime Bernazani parent and current Bernazani PTO treasurer. I share this story because you were kind enough to honor the longevity of our principals at the last meeting, and I appreciate that. As my twentieth year begins, and as you know, I've loved every moment of my time here in Quincy Public Schools. The biggest benefit of being a longstanding principal is the relationships that are built with the families in the neighborhood. I appreciate the relationships I've made through the years, and I love having my office right on Furnacebrook Parkway because the middle school kids will always stop by my window in the afternoon. I can hear what's going on in their lives as they progress through the grades. Anyway, anyway, I got a text from this parent, and she showed me her six-year-old kindergarten daughter's birthday board that she was posting on Facebook. The quote from her daughter was written on the board, and it said, "I like to hang out with the principal of my school, he is my friend." And it's made me so happy because that's pretty much exactly what I'm going for over there at Bernazani, and, you know, creating a space for the kids at Bernazani to come to school and feel loved and safe and supported. Of course, the mom got a hundred messages on Facebook asking if hanging out with the principal was a good thing, but she assured them it was. It's in the classroom, playground, and lunchroom, not in my office. So now on to the improvement plan. Let's start at the beginning on page five, please, and I'll walk you through some of the data. We once again used Edwin Report 301 as an indicator for our strengths and weaknesses. This report shows us how many percentage points we are ahead of or behind the state for each standard. If we're lagging behind the state, we consider it a weakness, obviously, and if we're ahead of the state, we consider it a strength, and then we can improve from there. I've highlighted areas in which we are well above the state for your perusal in the data Something I wanted to point out as you flip through the pages is the fact that we have many areas to celebrate across all grade levels and subjects, and I'm so proud of each of our teachers at Bernazani. I want to be sure I emphasize that tonight for them. At this point, if you could please turn to page ten, I will share our goals reflection. I am happy to report that we made progress on all of our goals in ELA. However, in grades three through five, we did not meet the goals that we set for ourselves. And this year, we are breaking it out for each individual grade level instead of clumping them like we have in the past. That way, we enable our teachers at each grade level to focus on their own goal. In the area of math, we did exceed every goal that we set, and last year, we adjusted our goals in math because we exceeded them so greatly, so we set our bar higher. Seeing that we still exceeded those goals made us very proud in the area of math. We did decrease slightly in MCAS, and our plan reflects our goals to get back to where we were. Those dips in MCAS are harder to track than math because it's different cohorts of students, but it's something we want to be proud of, and we love setting goals to achieve them. So moving on to page twelve, you'll find our vocal survey results. I did want to share some of our higher percentage categories with you tonight. Teachers at my school accept me for who I am. My teachers care about me as a person. My teachers are proud of me when I work hard in school. Adults working at this school treat all students with respect. I get the chance to take part in school events. My teachers will explain things in different ways until I understand. And that speaks volumes about the amazing staff at Bernazani. An area of weakness that we discussed was not feeling safe sharing my feelings in class. We're hoping that with the addition of kernels, we will see this percentage rise. We want students to be safe sharing their feelings during open parachute and community circles. And the question again came up again with the, you know, I read books with characters that look like me, and again, same thing, fifty-fifty. We did this enormous project about getting EDI books into the classrooms with the PTO, and we did a book a month per grade level. They certainly have the books in front of them, and I think we go back to the wording of the question, but that was another weakness. On page fourteen, you'll see the beginning of our goals section. After having omitted MCAS from our goal statements two years ago, we decided to continue this and use exclusively MAP data for our achievement data. This allows us to track the same group of students over time instead of the cohorts. Our academic goals continue to be rigorous, especially this year in light of our tremendous growth in math last year. At this point, I would like to speak a little bit about our social-emotional goal on page twenty. I can't tell you how impressed I am with the new kernels program and the staff that came with it through the grant. I've met numerous times with both Sarah and Meg, and they've been incredibly responsive to me and our teachers. We've met to make a plan on how to implement the program over the summer. We met during citywide professional development, and we've also met to support an individual teacher who is learning to support the individual needs of a trauma-sensitive student. They've been nothing short of amazing and very helpful with their expertise in trauma-sensitive schools. I greatly appreciate this program being implemented in QPS, and our social-emotional goal reflects that. On page twenty-four, we've outlined our professional development plan, which focuses mainly on the two curricula, illustrative math and core knowledge language arts, or CCLA. We also allowed time for continuous training in the savvies realized for our science teachers because that was a dip on MCAS as well. We are continuing our shift in our principal PD days, and that is to dedicate the last half hour to our staff meeting in teams. We have three teachers per grade level and three teams, so one teacher from each grade level is on the EDI team, one is on the social-emotional learning team, and one is on the community events team, which allows us to work on school spirit activities, and that also works in tandem with our flourishing PTO. Next, if you could please turn to page twenty-six, I want to highlight our extended day offerings. Last year, we greatly increased our before and after-school offerings, and we continued this as a staff, and I'm proud to present this newer, wider variety of offerings to our students this year. Our students genuinely love these clubs, and they're so happy to stay an extra hour at their school. If you could now turn to page twenty-eight, I want to highlight some of the incredible community-building activities that occur at Bernazani. These are the activities that provide our students with memories that will last for their lifetime, and these are the activities that build the wonderful community that we have in the Bernazani neighborhood. We have an online school store that has literally hundreds of options for swag. Each Wednesday is Bear Wear Wednesday, and everyone can be seen decked out in their Bernazani gear. We have parent nights out at local restaurants where parents get to go socialize and network and make closer connections with each other. We had our third annual haunted hallway this year, which was a blast. We have our upcoming shops at Winter Wonderland where our students can purchase affordable presents for their families. We are in the middle of our Giving Tree season where we sponsor needy families with holiday gifts and decorations. We have an upcoming Spirit Week before the holiday break. We have dedicated PTO money for booking visiting authors and artists, which is a tradition that predates my time here at Bernazani. We have an upcoming Second Annual Multicultural Night, the first one was great, a career fair where family members can come and talk about their careers, and the kids can circulate, and also various fundraisers. We have our annual Bernazani's Got Talent Talent Show in the spring, our annual Bernazani Red Sox Night at Fenway Park. All of this culminates with our promotion ceremony for fifth graders on the last day of school. We have a very active social calendar here at Bernazani, but I am so proud of the sense of community that we foster throughout each of these events and traditions. I truly appreciate the tireless work that our PTO does for both the students and staff of Bernazani. I also appreciate their input and work in creating this document. Their support and dedication is greatly appreciated. In conclusion, I want to express my utmost respect and admiration for the staff at Bernazani. I've always said that the most important decision a principal has to make is who is standing in front of the students every day. Our staff not only has the best interest of each student at heart emotionally, but they also plan so carefully each and every day to ensure the academic success of every child who comes through our doors. And when I say staff, I mean everyone, including the cafeteria staff and custodians. The school would not enjoy the same reputation and success without all of them, and my deepest thanks go to my entire staff. I also want to thank our students. Being greeted by hugs each morning as I stand outside with the kiddos is something that not many people get to start their day with in their job. I truly appreciate spending my days with the wonderful children of the Bernazani neighborhood. These kids are what makes our school great, and my most important thanks go to them. Finally, I want to take my last moment here tonight to thank Mr. Guttrow and Ms. Lebo for their leadership and support of our school system during my time here at Bernazani. I truly appreciate your connections to Bernazani, both of you, and your support of me, both personally and professionally throughout the years. Thank you so much for all you've done for Quincy Public Schools. Thank you so much for your attention at this point. I welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoobley.
I do want to point out page forty-two, where you have, "My teachers are proud of me when I work hard in school, fifth grade, a hundred percent." And that's something I would totally highlight. That's impressive.
Thank you.
I love your extended day offerings, the magnificent math club stood straight out to me. That sounds great. You have a lot of great titles for your clubs that are great. I would like, was there no kindergarten clubs? They can't do, they don't have any?
It was harder for us to find, you have to find the teacher to find the niche, you know what I mean? And kindergarten is a grade that not everybody wants to teach, but we will try to work on that in the spring. We did map it all out this year, but it is hard to find the kindergarten.
Okay. And I also want to say, too, that the question about the "I read books" in the class that include people who are similar to, I have discovered over the years of this question coming up that the only way this is ever going to be fixed is if every school has autobiographies in the classroom, that the kids write themselves and have their own book, and Johnny Smith has a book about Johnny Smith that is about Johnny Smith for Johnny Smith to therefore then check yes on this question, because it ain't happening. It just isn't gonna. So don't beat yourself up. But I love that you're trying. I love that your school is making a huge effort on this. I think that's wonderful. Can't go wrong with putting more books in schools that are diverse and cover every aspect of everybody, but you're never going to fix this unless, like I said, Johnny Smith is only going to check that box if it's about him. That's my opinion on this question. So hate to see everybody, I hate to see the principals come in and really.
I know.
Put themselves down on this because you're all trying, you're all trying, you've been trying for years. It's, I just don't see it happening.
And the books are there.
Yeah, they are, and everybody's trying really hard, and I just don't see it happening. But thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guttrow.
Thank you. Peter, first, thank you for your twenty years, and congratulations for your twenty years serving the families of Bernazani or Furnacebrook School as I refer to it, because I went there when I was a kid. And I will say that, you know, when I went to Furnacebrook Bernazani, I can still name every teacher that I had at every grade level. And you have brought that same culture. When you talk about the most important job that you could do is hiring the people that are in front of the students, and I remember, and it's the same culture today as I feel like it was when I was there, and that's a tribute to you and your leadership, and I appreciate it, and, you know, the vocal data speaks volumes about that, and I pay attention to the vocal data. I think it's really important. But you've also been very adaptable, I think, over the years, and pretty pragmatic in how you do it. And just the time when I was award counselor to the time sitting in the school committee working with you has been nothing but a pleasure, so I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Diane. Thank you.
Ms. Perdios.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dionne. Vocal data is amazing. You know, definitely the number of opportunities that families have to get in, engage with the school, and be part of the community there is excellent. I mean, there's just so many ways that they can get in and be part of the community, so that's fantastic. You guys do a great job on that. I did like seeing the number of extended day programs you guys have. My kind of questions or comments or maybe suggestions might be more on the goal side of things than the vocal side of things. No science goal, was there a reasoning behind not including a science goal?
I spoke with Dr. Perkins about that as well, only because we'd seen so much growth, nineteen years of growth, and this was the first dip, so I felt like we weren't really doing anything wrong. But with that being said, we did carve out time for PD so that those three teachers can meet together and plan. But I just see it, I see it as a dip, not as a trend, you know what I mean? We've been so successful in science through the years.
Okay.
And we haven't changed the staff, so, yeah.
For sure. Definitely, starting at sixty-nine percent last year and going to fifty-three, I mean, sixty-nine percent is extremely high. So definitely, I just wasn't sure kind of where, you know, what you, I assumed you had addressed it in some other way, so I just wanted to ask about that. The math goal, it seemed like you kind of crushed those numbers this year. Can you tell me what brought you to not want to increase those math goal numbers a little bit?
Yeah, we elevated them last year, and then we did crush them, but we jumped up. I think we did elevate a bit from last year, no?
Well, just maybe even higher than what you had, because it seemed like your goals would have been below, it seems like this year's goals, fourteen points for grade two, thirteen for three and four, and ten for five, where you had a nineteen, eighteen, and thirteen-point jump. It just seemed like maybe they could have, you know.
Yeah, we talked to the team, we just wanted to make them attainable, but also, we were doing well, so.
All right, I just thought I'd ask a little bit more about that one. And then I just, maybe next year, just maybe a little more specific on the goals. I feel like there are sometimes we see these plans, and every school is a little bit different, so it's not universal, but sometimes we'll see things like picking out like, you know, fractions in math or whatever, something in the map that you guys seem to be struggling with kind of year over year and sort of addressing that one issue, or maybe even the individual growth projection goals, something like that, incorporating those in there instead of just a straight rate point increase. I'd just love to see that, just to see a little bit deeper data and try to get those, because you get great results, but even kind of going deeper on that would be fantastic.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I appreciate that feedback.
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Guttrow.
I just want to say one more thing. I noticed in your activities and engagement, the twentieth annual Jane Farrell Smith football game, she was my sixth-grade teacher, and she is still a dynamo. She is doing great things, so. I mean, again, that's the culture you keep, and you look back, and you honor the folks that served before, so.
Yeah, I can't believe it's been twenty years.
Yeah.
She was your sixth-grade teacher?
She was.
My kids had her.
Yeah, she was there forever, yeah.
And she was young then. My kids had her. What was she, like, ten when you had her? That's crazy.
So I have a couple of questions, really, your vocal data and the community feeling in the school is incredible. The traditions that have been going on like that and the new things that are added are just amazing. It really is an amazing community. I'm also concerned about the goal statements. I'm concerned about the science. I understand what you said to Mrs. Perdios, but if that's just a momentary dip, or if it's not, next year, you're going to be in big trouble.
We have to address it, yes. I mean, we're addressing it now, but we'll include it.
Okay. I would like to have seen more data on the goals, too. I think that the MAP data is good, but we're learning that through all of these things that the MAP data can be great because you could be starting here and doing really well, but just getting to here. But if your MCAS scores are not showing a related increase, your growth in ELA was very low last year across the board with all populations. So I just think I would have liked to have seen a little more rigor in the goals than we did this year. But except for that, oh, I love the diversity in your reach program, too. It's probably the most diverse reach program in the city, so.
Oh, really?
It's great to see that, because that was our hope when we put reach in place, that we'd get more diverse folks there. I'll entertain a motion to accept this by Mrs. Hoobley, seconded by Mr. Bogoli. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us. You may begin.
Good evening. I'm Jim Hennessy, the proud principal of the Wallston Elementary School, and I'm excited to be here to share the incredible work happening in our school, to celebrate our students and staff, and to present the twenty-five, twenty-six school improvement plan. Before I dive in, I wanted to say a thank you to you and all the members of the school committee, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Perkins, and members of the S L T. Your commitment to Quincy's children, your steady support, your willingness to listen... Your commitment to Quincy's children, your steady support, your willingness to listen, and your investment in our schools makes all the difference. On behalf of the Wallaston School community, thank you for believing in what our students can accomplish. Of course, none of this happens without our amazing staff. Every single day, Wallaston teachers show up with energy, compassion, and high expectations. They not only challenge our students, but they support them. They create an environment where students want to learn, and I am grateful to work alongside them. And our students, they are the heart of Wallaston School. Their curiosity, their enthusiasm, and their kindness inspire us. We love watching them walk through the doors each day, ready to grow and learn. And finally, our parents and guardians continue to be true partners. Our PTO is strong, creative, and community-centered. From the fun run to the trunk-a-treat, to family bingo night, and so many more events, families bring a special spirit to Wallaston that makes our community shine. We are enjoying their year-long theme this year, Rooted in Community, Growing Together. Looking back, it has been a year of exceptional growth. Last year, we set high goals in ELA, math, science, and social-emotional learning. Tonight, I am thrilled to share that Wallaston not only met our goals, we exceeded every single one. Our Massachusetts DZ Accountability Rating has climbed to an impressive 89%, up from 85% last year and 83% the year before. In the area of MCAS achievements, our MCAS scores continue to be a point of pride. In ELA, 65% of our students met or exceeded expectation compared to the state average of 42. That's an 8% jump from last year and a 12% gain over two years. In math, 70% met or exceeded expectation compared to the state average of 44. And in science, 68% met or exceeded expectations with a state average of 46. These results tell a clear story. Wallaston students are thriving academically and outperforming the state at every grade level and in every tested area. Our MAP growth is even more exciting. In ELA, every grade exceeded their targets with double-digit gains in several grades. In math, students surpassed expectations with increases of 17 to 24 rit points, far beyond our goals. In science, grades four and five exceeded their growth targets as well. We also reduced the number of students in K-1 needing intensive reading support by 23%, more than double our goal. In review of our vocal survey results, Wallaston School Climate Score is 60, well above the state score of 50. We also exceeded the state in engagement, safety, and environment. Our students told us that they see our SIS School as a place that is safe and welcoming. This steady year-over-year growth is a testament to our students' hard work, our staff's dedication, and our community's unwavering support. Looking ahead, I'd like to share our 25-26 School Improvement Plan. Our plan for the coming year continues our commitment to excellence, equity, and being a positive learning environment. It reflects deep data analysis, targeted goals, and ongoing collaboration with staff, family, and students. Our English Language Arts goal is simply to build strong readers and writers. We will achieve this by focusing on strengthening foundational literacy in K-1 with a goal of lowering intensive need readers by another 10%, increasing our MAP RIT growth in grades two to five, and bumping achievement by 2% in MCAS. We will be deepening writing instruction across all our teams using CKLA and the Writing Revolution. Every grade level has a thoughtful, targeted plan that ensures all readers grow and all writers shine. Our mathematics goal is to build confident and creative problem solvers. In math, we are aiming high, a 10-point RIT increase across grades two to five, and we have a powerful plan to get there. Our priorities include: strong commitment to illustrative math across all grades, daily math talks, hands-on centers, and real-world projects; increased use of manipulatives and visual supports; collaboration with our math interventionists to provide meaningful small group support; and encouraging flexible thinking and multiple strategies, truly building mathematical confidence. Our message to our students, you don't just do math, you are mathematicians. In science and engineering, we want more hands-on discovery. We want science to continue to be a vibrant part of learning at Wallaston. This year, students will engage in hands-on activities such as planting gardens, STEM Fridays, and weekly experiments. We'll use science notebooks to deepen inquiry and scientific thinking. We'll be strengthening writing and science through claim, evidence, and reasoning routines. We'll also be participating in signature Wallaston projects like the animal fair, engineering projects, and the biome fair. We want students to see themselves as scientists, engineers, and problem solvers, and our plan supports that vision. In the area of social-emotional learning, equity, diversity, and inclusion, we want to be a community that cares. One of the things that makes Wallaston such a special place is our commitment to building a community where every student belongs, every voice matters, and every child feels seen. This year, we will hold weekly community circles, open parachute lessons. We look forward to introducing the kernels and exciting SEL toolkit that reinforces positive behavior. We will expand our family communication through CSO, Class Dojo, and Talking Points. We'll offer SEL groups, check-ins, leadership opportunities, and kindness-focused extended day programs. And of course, participate in the district's Attendance Matter Campaign with a renewed focus on celebrating strong attendance. Together, these efforts will help create a school environment where students feel safe, supported, and empowered. Together, we are building a brighter future, literally and figuratively. Last year, our theme was born, Team Wally, Building a Brighter Future. It was such a hit that we're gonna continue with this year. Students wore hard hats, they took team photos, and learned the meaning behind our monthly traits. The first letters of each of our traits even spell out an important message that is core to our school identity, "We" before "Me." Just like the teams of workers who came together to prepare our building last summer, our staff, our students, and families are working together to build something meaningful, a brighter future for every child who walks through our doors. In closing, Wallaston School is a place filled with enthusiasm, pride, hard work, and heart. Our achievement data is strong, our growth is exceptional, our school climate is positive, and our students are thriving. Thank you for the honor of sharing our plan with you and for your continued support. We look forward to another successful year, and as always, we welcome your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cahill.
Do they have to go first? Okay, you're sure? Congratulations. Great work, you know, and it feels good when you get to, probably for you to get to put this together and really see the work that you've been doing, you know, and the results. My, I have one, I'm looking at the PTO money that's raised, which is phenomenal. Is there a, I don't know, when I used to work at one of the schools, and PTO money has to be spent within that year, is that still a rule? Like, do you have to, if you raise money in this school year, do you have to spend it within the year? Okay. Because that was something that was, that we used to have to do. But let me ask, what do you do with that money? What do we do? How do you determine how it's spent with the PTO in your school? Can you have, do you have any examples of how you've had this contribute to the school?
Sure. I mean, it's a team effort. We have a very large PTO. We get together and we discuss the priorities for the year. And then one of the, their whole theme is about building community, so all of their events, nobody gets charged for anything, everything is covered. We just want to do all of our events, we just want it to be open. We don't want any obstacles for anyone to come, so no one is paying for any of that. Field trips, they're super supportive of all of our field trips, just classroom needs, events, people that come into our building, like just like the Chinese New Year celebration, we had a dragon, all the different events that we have, they're just pretty, they're so generous, and they, I feel like we all have a common mission, which has been so fun, and, you know, it's been a great team to work with year over year. Each year, students, parents graduate, and new ones come on, but it's been that, like, also, Ms. Hubley, you know how it was. It's just been an awesome, it's an awesome group of people. I feel like they're a working team, and wherever they, wherever there's a need, they just step up.
Yeah. And you give them, as a principal, maybe some ideas of where you might have need in the building as well? Anything extra that you would want, that you would ask them to support?
Of course.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's good. And I think that was my only question. I did have something else, but I can't think. Foggy today. But, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my other thing was, can we get, take some of that money to build a closet for the oven and the refrigerator?
Enrichment.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. Actually, on that point, I think you have a 14-person PTO this year. If I correct, I went to a PTO meeting, and it was literally three tables set up. It looked like you were at a wedding, and this was the head table, and you were like waiting for a cheers kind of thing. But yeah, I believe it was like 14 people in their PTO this year. So, page 48, "The teacher's support helps students who come to class upset 100%." Fourth graders agreed that that was, that's impressive. That's very impressive to see that. I love seeing the 100%, because I mean, they all disagreed on something, which is insane in its own. So, what was I gonna point out, too? On the facilities, another thing, student desks and chairs, are they broken, or do we not have enough for students that we have in the building?
We have ample. We just, I feel like they've been become dated, and we've been pretty fortunate, like every now and then we'll get a classroom set, so I'd love to be able to keep that, you know, keep in the rotation, because some of them have been there for a while.
Okay, so they just need to be replaced?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I love your goals. Congratulations on your progress. And I also love your action steps. I think that, very thoughtful, very thoughtful, put through all the action steps you have in your goals. And I love that you have a science, technology, and engineering goal. That's wonderful. So, thank you for this, and thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubley. Mr. Guttrow.
Jim, like I said to Peter, Quincy is fortunate to have leaders like you and he, and a lot of the principals that we have that are extraordinary, that have had so much time in the same building and know the parents and know the students and know the building. And what you did on the across-the-board achievement and growth and assessment data is astonishing. It is phenomenal. It was super impressive, you know, and I can see the pride you have in sharing that with us this year. So, I want to congratulate you on that, because those are great numbers across the board. And, you know, as always, your vocal data is great, your community engagement is great. And I think it's because you have, you two have an exceptional team and are a great leader and have an incredible culture at Wallaston. And, you know, I'm winding down my time on the school committee, but you're a shining star that makes QPS so good, so thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. It's a great team, and I thank you for everything.
Ms. Perdios.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Hennessy, for the plan. As Ms. Cahill said, congratulations. It's a great plan, lots of great information, a lot of success going on in your building, for sure. The vocal data, I just wanted to point out a few things, just not only do the kids, is it, it's clear that the kids are safe and happy, but that peer-to-peer interaction, you have really high numbers on that, which isn't, you know, it's been kind of up and down and kind of a struggle in some of the schools. So, knowing that the kiddos are getting along with each other and feeling respected by each other is huge. So, I think that's, that just says the culture and the climate in your building, so that's fantastic. And the one question that always, I always feel the most is, in my school, groups of students tease or pick on one student, and I, that question kills me, because I want that to be 100%. No one agrees with that. It's totally not right. But the numbers that you have, that 88.1% in grade four and 83.3% in grade five disagree with that, meaning that, you know, that's not really happening at your school, students aren't seeing that. It's just phenomenal, because I don't want anyone to ever, any child to ever feel ganged up on, or, and it's very difficult at that age to not feel that way sometimes, so it's great. The numbers that you have there are fantastic. I just had a couple of questions. On the social-emotional goal, the goal number four, you have three opportunities, three-plus opportunities. Is that per day, per week? What was the timeframe of them?
I don't know why I write that like that is, because I feel like we do all of them that we write, so I don't know why.
Yeah, okay. So, there's just an ongoing opportunity.
It's like a safety net in case you get off here, but yeah, I don't know why I do that, but we most, everything that's on there is what happens.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if it was just a shooting for having three SEL kind of opportunities for kids a day. That felt very aggressive. It felt like a lot, but, you know, maybe so, because the students are feeling so supported. So, I was just kind of more curious on that one. And then on your goals, obviously, because you've done so great academically, now I'm gonna, now I'm gonna scratch that a little more and say, so, it feels perhaps, especially in ELA, where you saw an 11% increase, another 11%, seven and six percent increases in ELA, having a 3% kind of increase across, or 8% for grade two and a 3% for grades three to five, it felt like maybe they could have been a little stronger there. Did you, how do you feel about that?
It was a conversation, I feel like they've had such positive, and the growth has been so great, and we've kind of kept it at that. Obviously, the goal is to exceed that each year, but I left it up to the teams, and that's what I felt they felt comfortable with.
Okay.
And so, that's where we left it at, but obviously, I'm hoping to come back here next year and say we exceeded them again.
Yeah, no, that's a perfect answer. I mean, as long as the team feels comfortable with that, that's fine. I just wasn't sure if, you know, I always like, you know, really aggressive goals, like even if you don't meet them, they're really great, but I, you know, I just like to see us pushing it if we can, just, you know, to get everything we can out of our students, because they can, they can get there. We see it, so. And I love the action steps. You had a lot of new things in your action steps, a lot of new action steps on everything, which I thought was fantastic, that you're continuing to grow. And then I just wanted to ask about the security cameras. Can you just talk a little bit more about, that was in your facilities needs, I believe, or, security cameras needed to be updated? Are they not functioning? Are they, do you need additional ones? What's happening there?
Yes.
Both? Okay. So, we're kind of at a safety concern.
I think it's been noted.
Okay.
Something's misplaced.
Excellent. Great. And you need some printer ink. That feels like something we could do. Maybe we can get you some color printer ink. Feels like a pretty achievable goal, right there.
We have a generous PTO, so I felt...
Yes, well, there you go. The 14, the 14 PTO members could maybe help with that, but also, I think we could as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So, I, too, wanted to say, your data is incredible. It really is incredible. The fact that you're the 89th percentile is amazing. Really is amazing, and it's something all of you should be proud of, the community. And I live in the neighborhood, so I know how people feel about the school very strongly. And I see those kiddos walking down the street every day, happy as can be, going to your school. I loved the fact that you picked areas of focus for your goals, because when your scores are that high, you really have to look at what's missing. And you look like you really drilled down to that in all of those goals to find an area of focus by grade level. So, I, that's amazing to me, it really is. So, you're now working on individual student stuff as opposed to, can I make this school any better? I'm just so proud of you and so grateful for you to be here doing that and doing such a great job.
Appreciate it. Thank you for saying that.
So, I will entertain a motion to accept by Ms. Regoli, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight and thank you for your review of our, the school improvement plan for Atherton How. The staff and I are really proud of the work that is reflected in the school improvement plan, the analysis and reflection of last year's goals, as well as the action steps towards the goals for this school year. It's hard to believe that we are already a third of the way through this school year and we're off to a terrific start. I added some pictures under each of our goals this year, pictures that are showing that our action steps are fully implemented and well on their way. We continue to use M-Class and MAP as a measure for our academic goals. These screeners and assessments are really consistent, they're reliable, they provide data very quickly, which makes them practical and easy for our teams to work with. We also have found that MAP is a really good predictor of MCAS proficiency. I have, I always show a visual. They really help us progress monitor and adjust our instruction. These class or grade level folders that some of you have seen me show before are just a visual representation of the charts, sure, the charts that you see in our school improvement plan of working to increase proficiency and just next month, believe it or not, we will be doing our middle-of-the-year benchmarks where, you know, we hope to physically be moving these students, you know, from the lower percentiles to raise their proficiency and/or maintain their proficiency. Many action steps, we do these for each class, each grade level, action steps that we put toward these to increase our proficiency include data team meetings, mini ILT meetings where students, staff can meet on students that are maybe not making adequate progress as we would expect, intentional planning in our schedules using a designated win block at grades two, three, four, and five, what I need. Also, explicit curricular engagement with our families, sharing information with our families consistently on what their students are learning in the classroom and how they can help. For our social-emotional goal, we chose to build action steps this year around the work we are doing with the Select Schools Project. Our trauma-sensitive schools task force team at the school has already had time to start reviewing the survey given earlier this fall, as well as the spring's grade four and five vocal survey from DC, and helped build and implement important action steps to continue to ensure all of our students, our staff, and families feel they belong at Atherton How. Action steps such as our grade-level community meetings, community circles for students and staff, our partnership with Raising Multicultural Kids for grade four and five, and our March Madness Bracket of Books, in our school assemblies, all ways we are intentionally working to make sure all students' cultures, backgrounds, experiences, and abilities are celebrated, that students continue to love to come to school each day, that they matter, then they will engage more, they will come more, and they will exceed. I am prepared to answer any questions or share more information on any of the data in the school improvement plan or answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Ms. Puredios?
Thank you. It did show, the improvement plan, the school improvement plan did show a lot of improvement, I think. I think on the MCAS data from last year, there were a couple really low numbers that last year made me very uncomfortable, that this year it was a marked improvement on both of those. I know it's a different cohort of kiddos, but still the action steps you put in place to address that seem to be working. So, that's fantastic, so I want to congratulate you on that. I just, the thing that I noticed the most probably about yours, your plan was the difference between the vocal data between the fifth grade and the fourth grade, and I didn't know if you noted that or as a team, if you guys had talked about that. You know, nothing like super drastic, but there was just kind of a difference in, you know, the, the way students felt about each other, the students respect each other in my school and students get along with each other, seemed to be a little bit different on the grade levels. And I just didn't know if you had had any conversations about that or if you had noted that at all.
We noted that as well. Grade four, grade five was a little bit lower than the fourth grade reports. I think we have, over the last two years, we've made some nice staffing shifts and, you know, different student support that, you know, maybe have, you know, contributed to that. There were a couple across the board, grade four and five, from last year to this year that we did see some nice improvements with. For example, when I need help, my teachers use my interest to help me. That was raised considerably at both grade four and five. This one as well, both grade four and five. In school, I learn how to manage and control my feelings when I'm upset. Last year, grade four and five was about 80% and this year closer to 95%, which I think speaks to some of the action steps that we've been really putting in about using our community circles and showing really great books where they're seeing characters, you know, that really persevere and work through challenges and we do a lot with that.
Okay.
So, we're happy to see these are impacting the students as they're reporting and we'll continue to work on that.
That's great. And, science, did you feel like you needed a science goal? You didn't feel like, we asked Mr. Dion, so I felt I had to ask you to.
And I knew you were going to ask me that. So, I, we've always had a science goal, so we talked as a school, as we also collaborated with principals, you know, that we don't technically need to have four goals, you know, we always had a reading, math, social, emotional, and science. So, we decided, you know, even though we're going to continue to work on science, you know, these action steps are kind of embedded, there's a lot of them in, at the end of the school improvement plan, things that we're doing, we just decided to really focus on the reading, math, and social, emotional as far as our goals and our improvement plan.
Okay.
But I mean, nothing differently than with our science instruction.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I did see an improvement in the MCAS and obviously MAP, you're still growing as well. It just, we're still a little below the state, kind of in that MCAS score, so just, yeah, I definitely wouldn't lose sight of that, but as long as you're working on it and still have a plan for that and focus on it, then that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have, I do have one thing. I'm looking at the, at all of the schools in this vocal data. And one of the questions that I think is interesting is that, the one about, when I am home, I like to learn more about things that we are not learning in school. I think your school, the kids really get it, that means that they have to do more homework when they're home, because all the other kid, all the other schools seem to have been like half, yes, I like to, half I don't. And here you have 72% do not want to learn at home. So, that question to me is interesting because I try to think like, what are kids thinking when they read that? Do they think that they just go and learn on their own and, you know, go and find some materials or read something or look something up online, or is it homework? What's the intent of that question? Do we know?
It's a terrible question. We've talked about it for years.
I think it's what you said first. I think it's that they, that they see the connection to real world or real life, right, and that they want to continue learning about whatever the topic is, that it sparks an interest and that then they would want to continue learning about it on their own at home. But I do think, you know, the reality is, fourth and fifth graders.
They want to play soccer.
That's not really anything.
Play with their dolls or Legos, you know.
I think I'd like to see a question asking the kids, what do you think this question means? And see what they, and see what they come up with, you know?
There's a couple of questions in that survey that are useless.
There's a lot of questions that we don't, we always talk about this every year, but I'm looking at that one and your school was the, was the most concrete in the 72% as opposed to some of the other schools, but, but thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I would have liked to see a little more on the MCAS in your goals because your growth is so low in MCAS, so your correlation is not necessarily, the MAP scores are not actually improving your MCAS scores. It doesn't, it appear to be because your growth has been low in both ELA and math. I don't know how it is in science on the MCAS, but, but, so I would have liked to see something more about that, but I think the rest of your stuff is great. Class size is great. I'm concerned about the radiator covers. Is that a safety issue? I mean, are those hot radiators available for kids to lean against touch?
We are working on, you know, it, it never really has become an issue, but maybe that we've had new boilers put in in the last couple of years. The radiators can get hot, so that's actually a work in progress and we're pretty much almost all finished with the covers.
Oh, you are? Okay, okay, thank you very much. That was my main concern. I make a motion, I'm entertaining a motion by Ms. Regoli to approve, submitted by Mrs. Hubley. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sylvia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All set?
All set.
Well, I want to start by thanking Mayor Koch, the Superintendent Malvi, Dr. Perkins, the leadership team behind me in this body for all your support as we undoubtedly approach some exciting times in the Squanam School community. This year, the appreciation feels extra meaningful as we began the school year by transitioning into temporary learning spaces and modular classrooms. This was a major undertaking, one that required flexibility, teamwork, and patience from every corner of the Squanam community. And I am proud to say our staff, our students, and our families met this challenge head-on with positivity and flexibility. From packing and relocating an entire school over the summer to learning new routines and opening our doors for a successful first day of school, the Squanam community demonstrated what it truly means to work together and support each other during this time of change. We also benefited some, from some outstanding teamwork led by the mayor, the superintendent's leadership team, Paul Hines and his staff, our teachers, our custodians, as well as the construction team made up of PCA 360, Ara Street, and Lee Kennedy. The collaboration and coordination was outstanding and we cannot say thank you enough for all the work in a short amount of time that led to a very successful opening of this school year. Despite these changes to our school, we have kept a clear focus on teaching, learning, and academics. The school improvement plan before you reflects that commitment. This year's plan continues to prioritize academic rigor with focused goals and action steps in ELA, math, science, and social-emotional learning. We are also following the district's lead with the Attendance Matters Campaign and working very hard to improve the overall attendance of all our students. We are excited to share some positive data points and trends we observed from last year's school data. Ms. Healy, Squanam Schools Assistant Principal and Grade Four Math Focus Teacher, will take you through some highlights.
In ELA, students in grades two to five achieved MAP rate growth of 15, 12, 6, and 5 points, meeting or exceeding our grade-level targets. Our students also outperformed the state on the ELA MCAS tests in multiple areas, including our focus areas of constructed responses and essay questions. This is a direct reflection of our teachers' commitment to CKLA, our professional development efforts, and focused writing instruction across the curriculum at each of our grade levels. In math, we observed some of our highest levels of MAP growth since beginning the assessment several years back. Grade two, an increase of 20 RIT points. Grade three, 23 RIT points. Grade four, 17 RIT points. And 16 RIT points in grade five. This is exceptional growth and it represents the entire school's commitment to illustrative math, improved pacing, better use of classroom manipulatives, and our now fully implemented ST math program. And for the record, we reached our 80% puzzle progress goal school-wide last year and helped the infamous Penguin GG get back home. In science, we also met our goal by not only improving MAP science scores, but seeing a significant eight-point increase in the percent of possible points on the grade-five MCAS compared to the previous year. Our teachers at every grade level continue to strengthen hands-on science experiments, STEM challenges, and CKLA knowledge units that support science vocabulary and comprehension. And attendance does matter. We have worked to make improvement, attendance a priority and we are happy to share that we made significant gains in this area. Our chronically absent rate decreased from 11.2% to 9.7% with several subgroups meeting or exceeding their targets. And finally, we are very proud of our vocal survey results from last year as they were among the strongest we've seen in recent years. Students in grades four and five scored 70 in overall school climate, 20 points above last year, 67 in engagement, above the state average, 66 in safety climate, also above the state, and 72 in environmental climate, one of our highest scores to date.
This tells us that even during a year of transition, our students feel safe, they feel heard, valued, and supported. In that regard, we also wanted to share that this year's plan continues to elevate social-emotional learning and inclusivity through the implementation of the new Colonel's SEL curriculum focused on trauma-sensitive schools. We introduced the Raising Multicultural Kids Program to our grades four and five students. We continue to have monthly PBIS assemblies highlighting character traits and celebrating students, and we have a community and belonging team that continues to plan outstanding school-wide celebrations and events. And of course, our student council continues to shine, leading our community service projects, organizing school-wide initiatives, and strengthening our commitment to kindness, safety, respect, responsibility, and not forgetting to be awesome. We have also maintained strong communication and family involvement and we hope this was on full display at the beginning of this school year as we work to communicate and over-communicate the many, many changes related to our temporary conditions. We continue to be proud of our school-wide newsletters and communications using the Smore platform, a supportive PTO that always supports our students, staff, and families, our open house, our math night, our Veterans Day efforts, Unity Day, Read Across America, and much, much more. Enrichments, enrichment programs, and engaging after-school clubs from the New Girls on the Run program to robotics, MCAS support, and an upcoming breakfast club focused on improving attendance and physical activity. Our concerts, our ceremonies, cultural celebrations, and more with, with more, excuse me, with a focus on maintaining all these programs during the construction phase of the new school project. All these outcomes reflect the dedication of our teachers, our interventionists, our support staff, and the incredible collaboration of our school-based teams. They also reflect the perseverance of our students who are showing us every day that learning can happen anywhere, whether in a traditional classroom or a modular building. We want to say thank you to our, the entire Squanam staff, including our teachers, our paraprofessionals, custodians, clerical staff, specialists, interventionists, and cafeteria staff. Your professionalism, creativity, and kindness continue to shine through even as we navigate new learning spaces and routines. We also want to thank our amazing students for their enthusiasm and their adaptability. They have embraced this year's changes with curiosity and pride, and to our families, your partnership, your trust, and your ongoing support have been critical to making this transition a smooth and successful one to start the school year. This is an exciting chapter for Squanam School. As we watch the new building rise, we are reminded that while our physical space is changing, our values, our pride, and our shared commitment to students remains as strong as ever. We are honored to present this school improvement plan and look forward to continuing to work together to support the success and well-being of all our students. And who knows, this plan may end up in a time capsule and read to the Squanam community 100 or 150 years from now. Thank you for your time and we certainly welcome your feedback and any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mrs. Puredios?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to you both. Just the conditions that, you know, you've had to kind of go through this year since the last time you were here before us and just the way it's been navigated, I was very anxious about how it was all going to go and you guys have taken it all in stride with positivity and it seems like cleanness of communication. Families seem clear on what's happening, what's going on. Your vocal data is amazing, so, I mean, it's getting through even with all the chaos that, you know, you may feel that you're going through, but you guys are really holding it together and we thank you for that because it could really be quite a mess otherwise. So, thank you for keeping it all together and leading the team through this and it's going to be great once, you know, once all the construction's done and everything, and I'm excited for you when that happens. And it was a great plan. I say the vocal data is great, the fourth grade, there were like 100% everywhere. I don't know how you got that many kids to agree on anything, but 100% all over the board on those vocal questions, which is great. It just really shows how great the culture is there, so thank you for that. I'm going to go back to front, I guess, this time. So, your class size, you have a couple of classes that are 24? That makes me a little anxious. Do you want to talk a little bit about how you're managing that? Is that problematic, having those high classes?
You know, it's grade five. We have two classes in grade five. We have a great teaching team in that staff. We were able to get the math support teacher in there as well and we spread it out and given both grade-five classrooms are in the modular classrooms, I'm okay with the physical space and the teachers have been great.
Okay, so that's working out okay.
Correct.
Okay. The extended day programs, I only saw one offering for K to two, the ST math. Is there anything else? But then also kind of in the narrative portion, in a different place, there was box, kickball, running, pickleball. Is that, is that for grades K to two? I didn't see that in the list of opportunities, so I didn't know if that was exhaustive. Is there anything for K to two?
So, it fluctuates based on staffing. There will be an ST math program again.
Okay.
We do do some physical programs in the spring. We usually let our K and our one students, because they're younger, transition the first part of the year and then we offer some. And then there's some programs, we have that New Girls on the Run program, but we're going to start according, our PTO is very supportive, we're going to do a Boys on the Run program, but we open that up to everyone and then it's based on if they, if students want to join. And given both grade-five classrooms are in the modular classrooms, I'm okay with the physical space, and the teachers have been great.
Okay. So, that's working out okay. Okay. The extended-day programs, I only saw one offering for K to two, the ST math. Is there anything else? But then also kind of in the narrative portion, in a different place, there was box, kickball, running, pickleball. Is that for grades K to two? I didn't see that in the list of opportunities, so I didn't know if that was exhaustive. Is there anything for K to two?
So, it fluctuates based on staffing. There will be an ST math program again.
Okay.
We do do some physical programs in the spring. We usually let our K and our one students, because they're younger, transition the first part of the year, and then we offer some. And then there's some programs. We have that new Girls on the Run program, but we're going to start according, our PTO is very supportive. We're going to do a Boys on the Run program, but we open that up to everyone, and then it's based on if they, if students want to join.
Okay. That's great. So, there is something for them.
Yes.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. What is your, so I see that your attendance data is great, I think. Your absenteeism data is great, and it went down this year to nine point seven. But you have it as a goal again. What's your new goal? If nine point seven seems great, but are you shooting for a number?
Well, we're following the district's lead with the Attendance Matters, and we're just all over that. And I think it's an effort to, we benefited a lot last year, and I think a lot of the school culture and climate, which I've always been proud of because I'm surrounded by a great staff and teachers and families in the community. But it was a bit sentimental last year in packing. So, with attendance, we wanted to give kids a reason to come to school. We were talking about the proud history and the tradition of school. And then combine that with following the district's lead with Attendance Matters. We thought that that would be a nice goal, that we partnered with some of the SEL goals. You know, that Colonel's program and the implementation of the RMK.
Right, right. Yeah. I guess if it's going to be an official goal, yeah, it's just it's hard to kind of measure it if there's no, you know, how do we know if we met that goal if we're just saying we're going to, we're just going to focus on, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you need to have it as a goal, then I think maybe specifying kind of what you want to get to would be helpful. Or if you're just happy to kind of keep that as something you want to work on, maybe it doesn't need to be an official goal, that type of thing. That's sort of where I'm kind of going with that question or that line of thought on there. But, because I think you're doing great on the attendance, especially through all the chaos. So, I think that's fantastic. Math, map goal. I was just looking at the, you kind of, similar to Wallison, you sort of kicked your own goals butt last year in the math map goals. So, I was curious as to why perhaps you didn't feel that you should have higher math map goals this year. Like, as your assistant principal described, twenty-three, seventeen, sixteen points higher, and your new goals are fourteen, twelve, eight, and eight. They just...
Yeah. I think similar to some of my colleagues in their response, we really do, especially as part of the Assessment Day and the Assessment Day cycle, we put it in the hands of the teachers to make some of the decisions on that. I certainly see your point. We shifted our goal writing this year to be inclusive from K all the way to five. So, you know, with K, we're doing an ST, K and one, an ST math portion of that. And then we gave the staff some liberties to set the goal, but it's certainly a point taken.
Yeah. No, I definitely see that in your goals, having both the dibbles, different ways of assessing, not just the map. So, I appreciate that as well. Yeah, I always like to see aggressive goals. Or even just the individual growth projection goals, if that's a way to get to it as well, that might be a little bit different for you. It's a different way of looking at it to sort of get those to be a little bit further, because your kiddos are getting there. They're achieving that. So, I want to take advantage of that. And I just wanted to ask you one last thing. How is gym working out? I know that that was kind of the thing that we hadn't quite figured out with the way this year was going to work. How has gym?
Well, it's a two-part answer. We've benefited from some great weather.
Yeah.
And then that space has developed into a better space than I think anyone imagined. It's a lot bigger. It's appropriate, and there's acoustical panels that surround the perimeter of around those classrooms and in the space. So, it's worked out great. And thanks to all of your efforts, combined SLT and the committee, our class sizes are low enough that we've been able to kind of manage classes in that space.
Okay.
And Brian Miller deserves a lot of credit for that.
For sure. There's a whole team working on that, I know. But they are able to move enough, especially with the really cold weather that's happening now. I just want to make sure the kiddos are getting some movement time.
Yeah. We had a conversation the other day that we were going to line the floor with a pickleball court and do some other things to enhance the space anticipating the winter weather, but it's worked out really great.
That's great. That's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Perdidos.
So, Mr. Sylvia, the vocal data is the best I've ever seen.
We're proud of it.
In any of our schools, you should be proud of it, especially during a year of kind of disruption. So, managing to make sure the building still felt that welcoming and supported is a pretty amazing feat for your staff. So, I appreciate all their work and your work, and I will entertain a motion to accept by Mrs. Hoobly, seconded by Mr. Bregoli, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Melvisti, you guys can take over.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. We're very excited to be here, and we thank you for your ongoing support. As I continue my nineteenth year at Montclair, it continues to be my honor and pleasure to serve such an amazing school committee, uh, school community. Tonight I have with me my Assistant Principal, Mary Hurley. I thank her for joining me tonight. We both appreciate the opportunity to share our School Improvement Plan with you. For us, this is more than just reviewing numbers. It's a chance to celebrate what we see in our school every single day. The energy, growth, and heart our students bring into the building. It's incredible to witness, and we don't take the privilege of doing this work for granted. To start, we like to highlight some of the academic growth we have seen this year because our students work incredibly hard, and it truly shows.
Early literacy was a major focus for us this year, and our students really rose to the challenge. In kindergarten, students below benchmark decreased from sixty-seven percent at the start of the year to just seventeen percent by June. And in grade one, students at or above benchmark grew from seventy-one percent to eighty-seven percent. And the above-benEFmark group increased from forty-two percent to sixty-five percent. These aren't just numbers. They represent children discovering that they are readers and that they can be successful. Watching that confidence grow has been one of the best parts of our year.
As that early literacy foundation strengthens, we're seeing the impact carry right up into the upper grades. Our MCAS and MAP data this year shows constant, in many cases, exceptional performance across grades three to five. In third-grade math, fifty-seven percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, which was thirteen percent above the state average. In fourth-grade ELA, fifty-five percent of our students were meeting or exceeding, which is fourteen percent higher than the state. And only eight percent were not meeting expectations as compared to nineteen percent statewide. Additionally, in fourth grade, seventy-five percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, which was thirty-two percent higher than the state, and only three percent were not meeting expectations, which was compared to seventeen percent of the state. Additionally, fifth-grade science, sixty-three percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, which was seventeen percent above the state's average of forty-six percent. As we celebrate these impressive academic achievements, it's also important to remember that our school's success isn't measured by just test scores. Equally important is the vibrant, inclusive community we are building, one that celebrates and honors the many cultures, languages, and traditions represented by all of our students and families. An event that brings this spirit to life at Montclair is our multicultural celebration, a true testament to the diversity and richness in our school community. Our students and families represent over twenty-eight different languages and countless cultural traditions. This celebration is one of the most well-attended events of the year, bringing together students, families, and staff to share performances, food, art, stories, lots of laughter, and lots of learning about our families. It's more than just an event. It reflects our values of respect, inclusion, and pride of who we are.
Seeing our students explore and celebrate each other's cultures is inspiring. It strengthens their sense of belonging and helps build a school community where every child feels valued and recognized. At the multicultural fair, we dove into new experiences. We tried flavorful Haitian food that surprised our taste buds, enjoyed watching Irish step dancing, learned to use chopsticks, practiced balancing a Vietnamese bamboo dragonfly on the end of our fingers, and ended the day with a beautiful henna design on our hands. At the end of the evening, we were all smiling from the wonderful cultures that we got to experience.
When we talk about community, one of the things we're most proud of this year is the sense of belonging our students feel.
Our student council helped lead the way in that work. They organized Unity Day, promoting kindness and inclusion. They ran Helping Hands at Thanksgiving to celebrate students' good deeds, send messages of kindness, and provide tips on how to be a good classmate. These visual displays celebrate positive behavior, reinforce our shared values, and serve as daily reminders of the caring environment that we strive to create.
Of course, we can't talk about our school culture without highlighting some of the moments that make our community so special. For example, our staff versus fifth-grade student Turkey Bowl that's become a tradition at Montclair School. It's an event full of laughter, friendly, most of the time, competition, and hometown pride since so many of our teachers attended Quincy schools. We end up doing Quincy versus North Quincy with our teachers, because so many of our students go on to become teachers here in Quincy Public Schools. And we've been around long enough that some of our students that we had as teachers are now back teaching in our building. So, it's great to see full circle. It's so much fun. Beyond the touchdowns and cheers at this annual event, what truly matters is the event represents how our students are seeing their teachers. They're being, they're models for our children. They're seeing their teachers encourage each other, model teamwork, have fun together. And most importantly, it's making school a place where students want to be. It's a place where students want to come every day. These relationships built through both playful competition and everyday interactions create an environment where students feel safe, supported, and ready to learn. I see it in classrooms every day. Recently, in an EL classroom, a student very excitedly exclaimed, "I saw his voice." This was in response to a new student, brand-new to our school, brand-new to the country, who confidently answered a question for the very first time. So, it's showing how our students are becoming empowered learners and how they celebrate each other's success. It's also the same excitement when a classmate arrives to school early in the morning on a fire engine, thanks to the Quincy Fire Department as a reward for a recent school fundraiser, which is another example of the whole school community coming together in joy and in celebration. It's moments like these, big and small, that capture the heart of our school, a place where learning, community, and pure excitement can truly coexist.
Feeling connected in these ways also supports another area where we've worked hard: attendance. This year, our overall chronic absenteeism remained steady at five point two percent, but we saw significant improvement with our lowest-performing subgroup, dropping from six point nine percent to three point seven percent. Our attendance team fosters a strong community of caring and belonging for all students. The team meets monthly, but support happens daily through collaboration across various staff roles. For example, our office secretary calls families with warm, proactive communication, such as notifying parents when a student is eligible for a bus. The school nurse checks in with students who have been absent, offering health-based support and reassurance. Our guidance staff provides emotional, day-to-day support to help students feel connected and ready to learn. Even former teachers frequently volunteer to serve as trusted check-ins or mentors for students who need an extra connection. Students will proudly visit the office to share sticker charts and attendance rewards, reinforcing motivation and celebration. This collective, team-based approach sets a positive tone and strengthens a school-wide culture where every student feels seen, supported, and valued.
All of this, academic growth, new initiatives, stronger culture, better attendance, and celebrating our diversity speaks to how deeply our community cares about its children. And in closing, we want to offer a heartfelt thank you to all of our community members. To the school committee, thank you for your guidance and ongoing support. To the Superintendent Mulvey, Dr. Perkins, and the entire superintendent's leadership team, thank you for believing in our work and walking alongside with us. To our Montclair staff, the absolute best staff around, their creativity, dedication, and heart show in every single thing they do every single day. And that's from our teachers, to our cafeteria, to our custodians, and everybody in between. I don't possibly want to name everybody, because I certainly don't want to forget anybody. But it's truly a team effort, and I am blessed with the absolute best team around. Our families and our PTO members, thank you for your trust. We always tell them, "Thank you so much for trusting us with your children." It's a true privilege for us to be able to work with their children every single day. And of course, most importantly, our students, their curiosity, kindness, determination, and humor inspire us every day. We are truly privileged to do this work. We thank you for supporting our school and to help ensure that every child has a chance to learn, grow, and shine. So, thank you for your time, and we welcome your feedback and questions.
I said, "I'll say something."
Okay.
Congratulations. I love your school. I've only been there, and the last time I was there, you had beautiful landscaping outside.
The students do that. I can't, we can't take credit for that.
Oh, my God. Well, I thought, oh, I was giving credit to the building department and the park department. Well, I take that back.
That's one of our clubs, actually, and we probably have in a week between forty and fifty students, Tuesdays and Thursdays, that take a lot of pride in doing that, and they even come over the summer months to water it and take care of it.
They do a great job. They really do. It's beautiful. I think, you know, the three words that you said, seen, supportive, supported, and valued. And that really, I think, is one of the keys to having success in a building because, you know, kids and adults, we all want to feel like someone is paying attention to us and is there for us and pays attention to what they're doing, good and bad. Sometimes, you know, maybe bad behavior is because they're looking for that attention as well. But I love those three when you said that, because I think that is a reflection of why you would have success in your building. So, thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Gutter.
The, you know, I've always believed that our neighborhoods are defined by our elementary schools. I think people associate with the elementary schools. And earlier tonight, we had a couple of principals here that are as long-tenured as you are, and I gave them a shout-out. And you equally, Renee, deserve a shout-out for your long tenure and the work that you've put in for the City of Quincy and QPS and the Montclair community. I think that the length of that tenure matters to the parents, to the students, to the neighborhood, you know. Has, and the culture that you've created there is incredible. And, you know, you two come every year, and you adapt, and you bring changes. And, you know, there are traditions like the May Festival, which I think is phenomenal and, you know, brings everybody in the Montclair community together. And this is just a unique opportunity for us to hear the good work that you do, but I see it, and I've seen it for twenty years. And keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you, for being here. I love that every school, every principal has said that they have the best staff and the best families and the best students, and I love that because we up here have the best. I mean, that's how you know that we have nineteen buildings that think that, you know, they have the best, so that we have all the best in all of our nineteen schools. So, thank you for that, and thank you to your staff and all your families and students. Great, great growth. There's a lot of great growth in here. The dibbles data was fantastic. The vocal data was great. Absenteeism is off-the-charts great. Again, the lowest-performing students having an impact in that as well is huge. So, that's hard work put into that and making those families understand that it's important to be there. So, thank you for doing that outreach and that hard work on that. The accountability data was great. Your math and science MCAS data was phenomenal. It's, you know, the MCASs were always like, "Well, it's MCAS, and the map's good, though." But, I mean, you guys are really, on the MCAS, are really crushing it. So, great work, because that's not easy to do. So, excellent there. So, just a lot of good things there and a lot of great growth. I saw that you had security cameras on your facilities needs, and that's been carried over since last year. Do you want to discuss that at all, the need for it or where you need those?
So, I think just trying to keep up with the technology and just to improve it a bit, we always look and say the most important thing is that we have a safe building. So, that's just one area that we look and say, "How can we improve it a bit more?"
Yeah.
So, that's certainly why that's on there. We did have an addition of a storage shed that's outside, which we're very grateful for, but that is impeding one of our cameras to one of our main entrances. So, that was one of the areas that we would like to see addressed.
Okay. I'd love to see us work on that and make that a priority, especially for a main entrance like that. And your May Festival, as Mr. Gutter said, is amazing, and those raffles are like totally like nothing I've seen before. So, I'm looking forward to that, and thank you very much.
A lot of work goes into that by our amazing PTO.
Oh, my gosh. Is it the ninetieth year or something?
Yes.
Is it the ninetieth this year?
Yes, it will be.
I can't even believe it. It's crazy that something's got on that long. So, congratulations, and thank you. Thank you.
Your kids come from far away.
I mean, like, far away.
We have students that are up behind Home Depot and that area.
And they're still feeling like they belong there, like they are part of the neighborhood. Your extended-day offerings are phenomenal. They really are. And your community and the family engagement stuff is wonderful. And it's, I mean, I've been to, my kids all went there, so we've been to the May Festival for a million years. And it's still going, and it's wonderful. And I just think it's a great little place. Everything, everything about your plan, I loved your goals. I really did love your goals. You were really focused on your, on your goals this year. And the DIBELS, as Mrs. Perdido said, from last year, were phenomenal. Great extended-day offerings, great class size, looks like a great place to me still. Remains a great place.
Yes.
So entertain a motion to accept by Mrs. Hoopley, seconded by Mr. Bergoli. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
You may start.
Good evening, everyone. This is School Committee Mary Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Perkins. It's my pleasure to be here to present to you on behalf of the Snug Harbor Community School, the 2526 School Improvement Plan. And with me tonight is Snug Harbor's Assistant Principal Diane Babcock. We are proud to be here to represent Snug Harbor. From our amazing pre-K students to our awesome fifth graders, families and staff work together to make each day a great experience and a successful day for our students. And this extends beyond academics to ensuring that our students feel safe and welcome at Snug. It's an incredible and amazing staff that is dedicated to providing the best possible experience for all of our students. At Snug, we strive to offer a variety of after-school programs to meet the interests of our students. To highlight a few, every fall, 60 students participate in Snug Soccer, and many family members come and watch and cheer on the students. This year, we added indoor basketball for our third graders. And another after-school we have this year is Movement and Mindfulness, where several of our CARE students stay and engage in motor movements and mindfulness techniques. The last event I would like to highlight is our third Cozy Up With A Good Book Night, which this year will be in January. And last year's was another great success. Mrs. Babcock will highlight some other of our after-school programs. And the last event I'd like to highlight is Snug Harbor's traditional Memorial Day ceremony that we hold each year honoring the six Germantown heroes. So when reflecting on last year's data, we acknowledge that we're not where we would like to be on MCAS. However, we do believe that our school has put together a plan that will get Snug Harbor to our goal. This year, we have determined that our focus will continue to be on identifying specific skills of individual students that need to be developed in both ELA and math. After a thorough analysis of our MAP and MCAS data, no single area stood out above any other. For this reason, we are continuing our practice from last year of developing differentiated targets for our students based on their math results from fall. And this is reflected in our goals on pages 16 through 27. I'm excited to highlight the growth that our students experienced in all grades and subjects last year. On MAP, ELA testing from fall to spring, our students have shown growth, meeting or exceeding the projected RIT growth levels in these grades. On page six, in grades two and three, we were close to our projected RIT growth within one point. And in grades four and five, our students exceeded the projected growth target. On MCAS, on page 41, our third grade did see a decline in the percentage of students who scored in the meeting or exceeding categories. We have put in several action steps in our goals to address this drop-off. In grade four, we saw an increase from 20 to 31%. And in grade five, we saw an increase from 20 to 22% of students scoring in these meeting and exceeding categories. In mathematics, on page 41, our students saw growth on MCAS and MAP testing. On MCAS, our third graders again saw a decline in meeting or exceeding categories, and we have put in several action steps in our goals to address this drop-off. In grade four, we saw an increase from 20 to 31%. And in grade five, we saw an increase from 20 to 22% of students scoring in these meeting and exceeding categories. In mathematics, on page 41, our students saw growth on MCAS and MAP testing. On MCAS, our third graders again saw a decline in meeting or exceeding categories, and we have put in several action steps in our goals to address this drop-off. In grade four, we saw an increase from 31 to 36%. And in grade five, we saw an increase from 11 to 23% in the meeting and exceeding categories. In grades two through five on MAP testing and math, on page 42, we exceeded our projected growth scores. Grades two through four saw growth of 15 or higher RIT points, and grade five saw over 10 RIT points of growth. And in science, on page 42, our students showed growth in grades four and five on the MAP assessment. In both grades, we met our goal from last year's School Improvement Plan. In fourth grade, we saw 13 RIT points of growth, and in grade five, we saw seven RIT points of growth. And on MCAS, on page 41, our fifth graders increased the percentage of students in the meeting or exceeding category from 22 to 31%. Another area that I'd like to highlight on page eight is the growth our CARE students had. On the alt-MCAS in ELA and math, 60% of students received a rating of progressing. And this progress is due to the hard work of the CARES team and their students. Diane will now review our ELA goals from last year.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to reflect on the incredible work done by our students and staff over the past year. Tonight, I will begin our goal reflection in the area of English Language Arts. Our first goal centered on our kindergarten and grade-one students. Through analysis using MCAS data, grade one met the target with 100% of students demonstrating at least 10 points on the Nonsense Word Fluency and Correct Letter Sound subtest. In kindergarten, 20 of 22 students have met this goal, falling slightly short of the target. Both grades, however, demonstrated substantial growth in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding grade-level benchmark. In fact, 64% of our kindergartens had met it, or rather, fell in the met or exceeding benchmark, and 60% of our grade-one students fell in the meeting or exceeding category by the end of the year. Our next goal focuses on our grades two through five. This goal includes two measures, one MCAS and one MAP assessment. When reflecting on our MCAS in ELA, we did fall short of the mark. However, when looking at the school growth distribution chart, we see that 53% or 82 out of 155 students had made moderate to high growth on ELA. Furthermore, based on our 2425 MAP results, we did in fact meet our school-wide goal. 60 out of 152 students, or 39.4%, moved to the next highest percentile band, slightly exceeding our target. We're pleased with the growth demonstrated across our classrooms and the progress made towards our target. Specific grade-level progress is highlighted on page 11. This grade-level data analysis enables us to identify target groups and make instructional shifts that directly address student need. Finally, when reflecting on our LDC students and their 2425 MCAS results, we identified several encouraging areas of progress. Half of the students increased their correct letter sounds from the beginning of the year to the end, and 36% demonstrated growth in the Nonsense Word Fluency subtest. These results provide valuable insight and affirm the need to continue strengthening our instructional practices, particularly in the area of phonological awareness, where targeted shifts can further accelerate student growth. Scott will now go over math and science goals.
In our math goal on page 12, we did exceed our MAP goal in all grade levels, with the exception of grade three, who nonetheless saw 24% of students move up at least one percentile band on MAP. While we did not meet our MCAS part of the goal, we did note some encouraging progress as this percentage of students who were in the meeting or exceeding category increased by 3% school-wide. And in our science goal on page 42, we showed growth in grades four and five on MAP, exceeding our MAP goal by at least two RIT points in each grade. Diane will now reflect on our SEL goal.
Our 2425 Social and Emotional Learning Initiative has proven successful once again. The consistent focus on SEL through monthly lessons equips students with essential tools to strengthen their emotional intelligence, interpersonal skills, and overall well-being. It is clear that this work has had a positive impact on our students. Beyond our SEL efforts, we continue to prioritize reducing chronic absenteeism. Unfortunately, we did experience a setback in those results, with our overall rate increasing by 5.6 percentage points. However, there were encouraging signs of progress, particularly for our lowest-performing subgroup, which saw a decrease of 2.3 percentage points compared to 2024. And then finally, the three dimensions of the school climate that we were able to use through the VOCAL survey. In the area of engagement, students in grade four and five reported feeling recognized, cared for, and supported by our Snug staff. Notably, 91% of fourth graders and 92% of fifth graders indicated that their teachers accept them for who they are. In the area of safety, a strong majority of fourth graders, 90%, reported that teachers support or help students who come to class upset. However, there are aspects of safety that require additional attention. Only 44% of fourth graders and 58% of fifth graders shared that they feel safe expressing their feelings in the classroom. We hope that continued emphasis on community circles and social and emotional lessons will help students feel more comfortable sharing their emotions in a supportive environment. And speaking of environment, this dimension of the VOCAL survey reflects a strong and positive school culture. An impressive 95% of fourth graders and 90% of fifth graders reported that their teachers are proud of them when they work hard. And an area of growth for many, as I've heard previous schools say, is that students' motivation to extend their learning beyond the classroom. Only 41% of fourth graders and 32% of fifth graders expressed interest in learning more about school topics at home. Strengthening our family and home connections will be essential to improving student engagement in this area. And then, new School Improvement Plan for 2526.
So when developing our goals for this year, our staff analyzed MCAS and MAP and MCAS data, which was then used to develop our goals and action steps that will continue our students' growth while addressing the areas of need. As you will see in our ELA and math goals for grades two through five, we have decided to continue our focus on increasing students' percentile level on the MAP assessment. The decision to concentrate on increasing percentile levels is grounded in the understanding that targeted growth on MAP alone does not guarantee the same level of growth on MCAS. By focusing on increasing students' percentile rank to the next level, we aim to ensure that their learning progress is not just maintained, but also accelerated, with the intention of ultimately improving both their MAP and MCAS performance. And Diane will go over our ELA goals for this coming year.
So tonight, I will highlight ELA. We do have a variety of measures that we'd use because it reflects the cohorts of students that we have in front of us. More specifically, on page 16, students in kindergarten and grade one will show evidence of achievement in DIBELS, using the Nonsense Word Fluency and Correct Letter Sound as measured by an increase of 50 points, excuse me, not 50, 15 points for 80% of the students tested in these categories. On page 19, you will find the ELA goal for grades two to five. Throughout this year, we will continue to focus on both MCAS and MAP growth assessment data to monitor and support students. More specifically, we'll work to increase the percentage of students in the partially-meeting, meeting, and exceeding expectations categories by 5% on the Spring 26 MCAS. Similarly, when reflecting on the MAP assessment, our goal for Spring 2026 is that 35% of the students scoring within the red, the orange, yellow, or green percentile bands on the Fall 25 MAP assessment will demonstrate growth by advancing to the next percentile band. And finally, on page 22, within our LDC program or Language Development Program, our goal is that by the spring of 2026, 50% of our students will demonstrate growth in phonics skills by increasing their quick phonics screener score by five or more accurate responses, measured when compared to fall and spring. These goals will be supported through targeted action steps that strengthen foundational reading instruction through CKLA skills, CKLA coaching, and Orton-Gillingham practices. Additionally, throughout the school year, we will continue to integrate high-impact instructional strategies from the Writing Pathway Platform, the Writing Revolution Platform, to further enhance learning. And then, sprinkled throughout each of these ELA goals will be our CARE-specific action steps. Our CARE students engage with the learning standard in a different way through a variety of entry points. And now Scott will go over math and science.
As with our ELA goal, we have a two-part math goal again this year. And the first part is to decrease the percentage of our students who are in the Needs Improvement category by 5%. For MCAS, we will be looking at year-over-year comparisons for grades three through five. However, we will also be looking at the cohort growth for grades four and five to ensure that our students continue to make positive progress as they move up the grade levels. The second part of our goal is to increase the percentage of students who move from 1 percentile band to the next highest percentile band on MAP. Professional development led by Molly Vokey, continued IM implementation in math intervention is providing targeted instruction to students are some of the action steps for this year. In science, on page 27, our goal is to increase our MAP RIT scores in grades four and five. Based on the high RIT growth in science last year, we have set our goal high, aiming for 14 points of growth in grade four and eight points of growth in grade five. And we will continue to use the Pearson Elevate Science and Realize Science online programs in grades three through five. And in all grades, teachers will continue the process of aligning the science content with the units of study that are in CKLA. And then Diane will go over our SEL goal for this year.
Right, one more goal, we promise. Our social and emotional goal continues to center on supporting students beyond the parameters of academics. During the 2526 school year, we will continue to implement at least one SEL lesson per month in every classroom. This year, we also began our partnership with the Select School Project, an initiative that will help Snug develop more trauma-informed practices. One component of this work includes implementing SEL kernels, which is a set of activities and routines designed to strengthen a child's social and emotional and academic development. Additionally, we will continue our collaboration with Raising Multicultural Kids, and we are excited to have received a grant that will allow author and illustrator Ruth Chan to visit our school and share her latest book, Unrooted. The second portion of our SEL goal, we'll continue our work on combating chronic absenteeism. More specifically, during the 2526 school year, we will work to decrease the number of students who fall into this category by five points. We will continue implementing our core attendance interventions, including regular meetings with our attendance supervisor, increased communication with families, ongoing collaboration with Broad Meadows. We will also remain committed to initiatives such as assemblies, bulletin boards, monthly raffles, and new this year, I was going to bring it, but it was a heavy lift, is our Golden Shoes Trophy. This award will be presented to the classroom demonstrating the most improved attendance. And finally, we developed a parent attendance barrier survey to better understand the challenges that may prevent families from getting their child to school consistently. And throughout the school year, we will work to promote these same elements in our extended ed programs. We will have targeted small group academic intervention programs, such as Orton-Gillingham, Pragmatics Groups, Science Groups, student leadership opportunities, and our highly-sought-after athletic programs like Snug Soccer and Snug Basketball. Family engagement remains a core pillar at Snug Harbor. Over the last two years, we have strengthened our PTO partnership and expanded our meaningful family events and initiatives. Over the summer, our dedicated PTO members enhanced our outdoor space with new painted recess games, including Foursquare and Tic-Tac-Toe. We recently secured funding for two new sensory paths in our CARES wing and in our preschool wing. And throughout the year, we will continue to offer exciting and meaningful family engagement opportunities, such as haunted hallways, literacy night, and our second annual multicultural night. As we introduce this new plan to you, our school community, we know the work does not end here. There is still much to be done, and this administrative team remains fully committed to our school, our staff, and most importantly, our Snuggies. Together, we will continue to support, nurture, and ensure the success and well-being of every child in our CARE. We would like to extend our sincere gratitude for Mr. Mulvey, Dr. Perkins, Mr. Marani, and the superintendent's leadership team for their unwavering support. We are equally grateful to the school committee. And a special thank you to Mrs. Lebo and Mr. Guttrow. And thank you for your commitment and service to the students and staff of the Quincy Public Schools. We wish you the best, and we are so proud to be a part of this village. And we welcome any questions or any feedback.
So all of our facilities needs will go into the Facilities Subcommittee, but I wanted to say, the additional card reader at the end of the east wing, blue hallway, and the three shades at the gymnasium sound like they, could we get a status on those? They don't look like they've been on for a while, and they should be. Okay, that just sounds like a safety kind of a thing.
Yep.
And, okay, thank you. Okay, that just sounds like a safety kind of a thing, and, okay, thank you. I love your Memorial Day ceremony. That is one, love going to that. You've had that for many years, and it's fabulous. I can't say enough about it. It's heartwarming. The kids do an awesome job with their readings and their singing, and they are phenomenal. And I love that you're honoring six families. I think that's great. It is, it's a very touching event that you guys do every year. The PTO, do you have a full board this year?
We have, most of the positions are filled. The only position that we do not have filled this year is a secretary.
Okay, that's great.
Often, our secretary comes to the PTO meeting, so it's helpful.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. I love your family engagement. I think that's great. And it had me at the beginning when you were talking about that you have two hundred students participate in your after-school activities. That's phenomenal. That is so great. I love hearing that. That's amazing. And I also loved reading about that you have the partnership with Quincy Asian Resources Now with the Grow Program, and that's going to be amazing, too. So thank you so much for your presentation, and yeah, this is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Both for being here. As Mrs. Hubley said, the Memorial Day celebration is just so touching, and it's fantastic to, I've been so proud to go and just be there for that, and I hope the kids feel it. It's a little more in a personal way because of the readings and the songs they're doing and different things. So it's fantastic. So I just wanted to start with that. In the sensory paths, did I just see a social media photo of one of the students just trying it out today? So I'm super excited.
Probably, we actually had two staff members that came in over the weekend and installed it this weekend, so yes.
Yeah, so that's great. So it's another connection to our social media. You guys are doing a great job connecting what we're doing here, so thank you for that. Quick question on, you guys had great class sizes. You know, the MCAS, there's some growth on the MCAS, but it looks rough, but you have fifty percent special ed students in your building, and I think that we need to remember that, that, you know, in your goals, you're very purposeful in trying to have that it be a personal growth. It's, you know, moving that percentage to the next band of achievement, and I think that that's fantastic. It's a really great way to kind of manage the population you have and still show growth and try to get the best out of those kids. So I appreciate the way you've looked at that data and the way you've kind of applied it to your goals, which I thought was really smart. The thing that I wanted to ask probably the most about, though, was your vocal data. So I want to start with goal number six. You have one SEL lesson once a month. Do you feel like that's enough with the challenging kind of vocal data that I was seeing in there? Do you feel like that's enough? Do you want to talk a little bit about how you landed at that?
Well, that is the minimum expectation that we have of our staff. Most staff members would do at least once a week, if not more frequently. Our guidance team goes in and supports them as well with that. So when we look at that, we're really looking at classroom teachers doing those lessons and not necessarily counting the guidance support that also go in there and do some of the lessons that they do, whether it's open parachute or some of the other lessons that we have used. So that's where the once a month comes from, but we definitely do more than that.
Gotcha, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. We don't want it to be a heavier lift for the educators, the classroom teachers, but also I feel like that those efforts are what's going to hopefully help improve that vocal data. It was just, you know, it's the ones that concern me, like Mrs. Cale and Mrs. Lebo mentioned, there's a lot of these questions that, you know, they're difficult to even understand if the kid knows what they're answering, to be honest. But a lot of these, you know, students respect each other in my school, you know, there's fifty-four and forty-eight percent. I mean, that's difficult if kids, half the kids don't feel that the other students are respecting each other or them, that's pretty tough. And, you know, students at my school get along well with each other, that's about fifty-fifty-ish, too. You know, so those are kind of the things where, you know, I'm happy to be at our school sixty-nine, sixty-seven. I'd love to see that go higher. I know it's a great building. I know kids like to be there. I've been there, I've seen the excitement, I've seen them enjoy being there. So I just love to see that those, the kernels and those open parachute lessons, the things that we have in place, I'd love to see that help that and help that community.
Absolutely, as would we, our kids do, as you said, they do love to be there. We would certainly love to have that reflected in the data. And yes, we will certainly look at that and work to increase, make sure that we are doing more of those kernels and on a much more consistent, regular basis. And I could promise you, it's more than once a month that we are doing them, and we will make sure that we are meeting that goal.
That's great, thank you. And I'm not going to check on number, I'm just saying, I'm just hopeful that those, I'm hopeful that those efforts are just going to help you be able to see it on there. And I love that the parent survey on attendance barriers, understanding the barriers, that's really helpful. So I appreciate you guys reaching out to families for that.
We haven't sent it home yet, we're still refining it, want to run it by Dr. Perkins before we do send it out. But yeah, we're trying to address those needs so that we can see what we can do to support our families to get their kids to school every day.
Right, and again, fifty percent of your population is special education, and, you know, that comes with its own challenges as well, as far as attendance and different things as well. So you're dealing with a lot, and you're managing really well, and just great job.
Thank you.
Yes. It depends, yeah, it depends. Everybody has their, everybody has their story. So, you know, we work, I have monthly, the team has monthly meetings with the attendance supervisor, we have guidance there, we have weekly student support meetings. So yes, I could probably tell you the sort of story or the narrative for each student, so it really depends. There's no solid demographic that, you know, consistently misses school. You know, but that's sort of our hope, having the survey to have, you know, understand better, like how can we help as a community get your student to school? You know, is it, you know, trying to, you know, get a walking club going in the mornings or, you know, some way that we can encourage, you know, parents to bring their kids to school? Is it, you know, do they need after-school options? You know, again, that's something that we want to know. So we're hopeful that once we put the survey out, that we'll have a better understanding of why, and then we can support from after the, we understand the why.
Fifty percent of your kids are bused into your building, right?
Most of our special ed students are bused. Yes, the citywide programs are bused, but some of our students on IEPs are students that, you know, what we would refer to within the community. So it really does depend. And some days, you know, we have students that have challenges and they don't sleep at night, and so, you know, whether they're, you know, overstimulated at night, and then the parents keep them home because they're, you know, they're not ready for school, they can't access. So it's those little things that we want to know, and we want to be able to support them, whether the reason is not sleeping or transportation.
And I think the Quarry Partnership in the Shop and Shop Food Grant is going to help with that, too, because seventy percent of your students are low-income. And so those are other barriers of getting to school.
Absolutely.
You know, there can be so many barriers for those kids to get there. So it'll be great to find out if we can drill down on that and maybe add some supports around what's causing the problem. Because the absenteeism, I mean, you can't get better scores if the kids are not in front of you, you know?
Agreed.
So it's, that's got to be the thing that we focus on most.
Mrs. Cale, how do you? Well, I think two things. One, how are things going so far this year in terms of the attendance rate in comparison?
We've seen an improvement so far this year. Our numbers are lower than they were last year. We are, of course, working to make sure that trajectory continues that way, and we don't see an uptick with the upcoming winter and cold and flu season, so.
That's a different, and that's a different thing. And also, from my experience and what I see, doing a survey with families, how do we encourage them to take the survey and respond to it?
That's a good question.
You know, probably the kids that are coming to school, their parents are going to do it. You know, what are we doing? Are we doing anything to try and really encourage them to respond?
Well, as we said, we haven't sent it home yet because we're still refining it, and we need, we'd like Dr. Perkins to look it over first, but once we do that, we will send it out electronically. We will probably also send it a paper version home because while we love smores and the electronic version for so many reasons, not the least of which is the translation ability, we also know that not everybody checks their email or responds that way, and having the paper version, we hope will also, it will create a little bit more work if we have to input the answers, but it will be well worth it if we can get a higher level of responses. So we're going to try both strategies.
Do we have, technologically with emails, do we see who opens their emails and who doesn't?
We, we can see, I'm not one-hundred percent sure that I can, when I send out like my newsletters and whatnot, I can see how many people have opened them, but not necessarily who. I don't know if that's a capability of the platform that I'm not aware of, but I definitely know.
We don't, yeah. Because I know, you know, in my, in some of the work that I've done, we've been able to do that so that you can see, okay, we have these parents, they opened it, and then they didn't, so then you can resend to them and get them to kind of take a look.
You can do, you can set a read receipt, but the parent would have to acknowledge it.
Right, right.
So they may, they may or may not. But I think, like, I would suggest that, you know, maybe we look at some prizes that go along with, like gift cards, you know, we have a great partnership, you have a great partnership with Granite, right? And I'm sure that they would give us some gift cards, things like that. I think any kind of incentive you can add into a survey makes it much more likely. Also, combining it with a parent night, so you have them there, they're a captive audience, and the Snug parents do come. You know, like they have their kindergarten days a couple times a year, it's packed. The parents do come, they are very active and very involved in the community, and so I think tying, like trying some of those kinds of things could help.
Maybe, and maybe you do something like an incentive for the kids. So like the student will go home and say, Mom, you have to do that survey because I can get into a raffle for, you know, whatever.
Yeah, we could get some really good prizes.
Yeah, okay, that's my question. Thank you, thank you for everything, thank you.
I have one other question, just because I don't, I don't know what this is. In your school needs, you say you need additional W-I-A-T-I-V.
That's the Wyatt.
It's an assessment.
It's a, it's a special education assessment. Happy to report, we've ordered it, so.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Have some happy teachers.
Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mr. Begoli, all in favor. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, happy holidays.
Have a good evening.
Good too, thank you.
It's taken such good care of those kids. We're going to take a two-minute break. And invite our colleagues from Clifford Marshall to present their plan.
Thank you so much. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present the twenty-two, twenty-six Clifford Marshall School Improvement Plan. Justine Sullivan, our Assistant Principal, and I are honored to represent our school community. At Clifford Marshall, we are fortunate to belong to a wonderfully diverse and close-knit school that reflects the many cultures, languages, and backgrounds that make our community so vibrant. What makes our school especially remarkable is not only this diversity, but the way our community comes together with genuine care and unity. Whether it's a community circle, a family event, or a collaboration between teachers, there's a sense of belonging that grounds our work and strengthens our capacity to help every child thrive. This year, our school improvement plan is guided by one central theme: connections. We believe that meaningful relationships between students, families, colleagues, and content are the foundation of both academic and social success. Our plan reflects this belief across academics, social-emotional learning, and family engagement. It builds on the strengths that already define Clifford Marshall and outlines the steps that we will take to deepen those connections so that every student continues to learn, grow, and feel at home in our school.
Over the past year, our data reflects steady and meaningful academic growth across subjects. In ELA, early grades showed strong foundational progress, with seventy-one percent of K-2 students meeting or exceeding benchmark expectations and continued reductions in those identified as well below. MAP reading growth averaged eleven-point-six RIT points, and MCAS ELA scores improved for the third straight year, outperforming the state, especially in writing and constructed responses. Math gains were particularly notable. Students in grades two through four grew an incredible average of nineteen-point-three RIT points on MAP. And on MCAS math, student growth percentile increased significantly from thirty-one-point-six to forty-six-point-nine. Fourth graders also excelled in science, placing in the seventieth percentile for map growth. While academic progress is strong, attendance remains a key improvement, with chronic absenteeism rising slightly to eleven-point-eight percent and requiring a focused attention moving forward. Our vocal survey data highlights one of our greatest strengths. Students overwhelmingly feel seen, valued, and supported at Clifford Marshall. These results affirm strong, caring relationships our staff builds each day, relationships that help students feel safe, connected, and ready to learn. The data also points to areas for continued growth. Only fifty-four percent of students reported reading books featuring characters similar to themselves. These guides are ongoing efforts to expand access to diverse literature through curriculum enhancements, media center updates, and grant-funded experiences, such as this year's Wondermore Author Visit by author Jason Chin. We are also going to add a share story aspect to our annual international night.
Reflecting on all of this data helps us understand both our progress and our opportunities for growth, leading directly into our goals for the coming year. Our math goal is for eighty-five percent of students to meet their ST Math puzzle goal and for all students to achieve nineteen RIT points of growth on MAP assessments. ST Math has helped our students build deep conceptual understanding through solving puzzles that allow students to see and experience math problems before the concepts are attached to language. This program connects powerfully with illustrative mathematics because it also centers around conceptual understanding and problem-based learning. When we connect ST Math's visual puzzle-based learning with IM's discussion-driven routines, students develop the flexible conceptual understanding that leads to lasting mathematical success. As we look at language arts, we have set two goals in order to reflect the learning of all of our grade levels. Our early literacy goal is to reduce by fifteen percent the number of students requiring intensive support in foundational reading skills, ensuring a strong start for every emerging reader. To build confident, capable readers and writers, we must provide a solid foundation, and will do so by meeting each student's individual needs through more targeted and responsive phonics instruction. We will also expand the use of high-quality, decodable texts for our beginning readers, giving them more meaningful opportunities to practice and apply these developing skills. In grades two to four, our goal is for students to achieve an average of twelve RIT points of growth on MAP reading, with sixty-eight percent of students exceeding their individual growth projections. To reach this target, we will deepen comprehension by strengthening vocabulary instruction and enriching CKLA unit celebrations to reinforce key concepts and knowledge. We will explicitly support students in making meaningful connections between texts, content, and their own experiences to strengthen understanding and retention. We'll also expand access to diverse, high-quality supplemental texts that reflect students' identities and interests, increasing engagement and supporting more rigorous reading development. Our fourth goal is to deepen social-emotional learning and strengthen our overall school climate by implementing the kernel's SEL curriculum and providing sustained, trauma-sensitive professional development. Teachers have begun this work by assessing the specific needs of their classrooms and selecting targeted kernel's lessons aligned to those needs. We will further enhance this effort by increasing the use of community circles to promote belonging and connection, and by expanding Tier Two and Three social-emotional supports to ensure that students receive individualized care.
This fall, our school set a clear priority to reduce chronic absenteeism. We all know attendance matters. We also know that every family situation is unique, and that solutions come when we create a space to listen, understand, and connect. To support this work, we began reaching out to families. Using our family liaisons, then, and the translator line as needed, we scheduled individual meetings. During these conversations, we shared their child's benchmark data, explained how absences impact learning, and provide personalized strategies to improve attendance. Since holding these meetings in early November, each student we met with has improved their attendance percentage, and three students have come off the list entirely. By working together with families and making connections, we will continue to work to improve attendance. With all these goals in mind, we have added additional common planning times for teachers. Our staff will use this time, along with professional development afternoons, to engage in targeted professional development focused on ST Math, kernels, trauma-sensitive practices, and curriculum reflection.
Family engagement remains a hallmark of our community, with events such as Literacy Week, International Night, Math Mania, PTO meetings, and grade-level celebrations that foster strong partnerships between home and school. Extended-day offerings will continue to provide students with academic support and enrichment, with clubs such as ST math sessions, morning movers, and the very popular Pokemon Club. In all aspects of our plan, we return to the same core belief: connection drives learning. By strengthening our relationships with students, families, each other, and our academic work, we're building a school where every child feels safe, supported, and capable of thriving. Thank you for your ongoing partnership and for your support of Clifford Marshall's students, staff, and families. We welcome any questions and feedback you may have. Thank you.
Mrs. Hoobley?
Thank you. And I'm looking at, at your report here. You have a really diverse population, even with some of the attendance issues. You've met your goals and you did a great job, and so congratulations on that. And it looks great, and keep doing this beautiful work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Perdidos.
Hey, guys. So, on page three here, I, I just want to read this sentence here. "We can better understand their stories, respond with empathy, and cultivate a school environment that nurtures both academic and emotional growth." And I just couldn't, I read that, and I'm like, that's what Marshall is. It's just 100% that. It's just, and also, just another quick little tidbit. So my oldest is a senior now, and she was filling out the Marshall Scholarship form as a Marshall alumni, and one of the questions on the form was, "What impacted Marshall have?" Something to that effect. And immediately, Cass said, "Marshall made me love learning." And it was just instantaneous. It just came out. For as much as she has struggled with every college application and answer, that was the easiest thing that she could have answered. And it was just, it's 100%. It has not changed. The people in that building, every single one loves the kiddos, and I just can't say enough good things about it. And you know how much of a tough critic I am. So, for me to say that, for sure, you guys are doing awesome. Meeting all last year's goals were great. I really, really liked that. I kind of did the math on your MAP scores from fall to spring for all your grade levels, and then I compared it to your RIT increases that you're hoping for this year. And your, your goals are aggressive, and I love that.
Ambitious.
I don't, I don't like safe goals. I love ambitious goals. So, having a 19-point for math, a 12-point for, for reading, for ELA, and also kind of tying it to those personalized growth, individual growth targets, sort of, kind of makes it individual as well. So, kind of really focusing on that was fantastic. So I'm super proud that you guys are pushing the envelope on that, because those kiddos can achieve it, and you definitely know how to get it out of them. So, good job there. The sensory room, I saw that in the online video. I saw that. I was curious as to what that was like. And then here, there it was, online, where you showed us what that sensory room looked like. So, and I think that's so needed for the number of kiddos that would hang out in your office, you know, having a tough time. I think that's much needed, and that's such a smart decision to have that, that space there. And I know it's hard to find a space in there, so that was really good. Goal number three. So that included the growth targets for the individual personalized kind of increase. Now, what about for math 2? Why were there no increases to the, what's it called? The individual growth projection goals for math as well as in the ELA goal?
I think because we tied in ST math.
Okay.
So we already had sort of a two-part goal, and so we wanted to increase the puzzles significantly, actually, from last year, in order to fully, fully implement ST math. So along with that, we didn't want to just drop an, and, you know, a MAP goal.
Gotcha.
So we just thought we would streamline and stick with like an aggressive RIT.
Yeah, that's perfect. I was just curious. I think that the absenteeism, you guys seem to be on it, but it's actually not super terrible anyway. And I think the dip that you saw in it, you know, it could be a lot of related to what was going on in the world, and families were a little scared to come to school back in the spring. So, that probably didn't help your numbers at all, and that's understandable, I think. Obviously, you have awesome family events. And just from being there, it's just, the community is really great, and you guys always welcome that and value the parents. Good class sizes, great vocal data. So, awesome job. We miss it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so I don't really have any comments or questions. I think your accountability data in math and ELA is very good. The absenteeism, I love what you're doing. I hope that's, maybe that's going to be the solution for all of us, but that is such a real positive thing, that you're actually taking those steps in, in reaching out to the families and finding out how we can support them. Because it is a great place. It's always been a great place. It's always been a loving place, a place that kids wanted to be, teachers wanted to be. So I think if we can just figure that out, we'll be fine. So I'm going to entertain a motion to accept by Mr. Begoli, seconded by Mrs. Hoobley, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have to make sure that we don't get killed by data. She's data queen. She knows more about the data than almost anybody else.
I synthesized it.
Go right ahead and give us your plan.
Thank you. Good evening, members of our school committee, Superintendent Malvey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Perkins, and the entire superintendent's leadership team. It is such an honor to present to you tonight. Here with me is our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Kathy DeMayo, and together, we will present to you our school improvement plan for the 2025-2026 school year. The plan before you is a product of thorough analysis conducted collaboratively by our entire Beechwood Knoll community. Beginning school-wide with our educational staff on assessment day one, all educators met in mixed teams to dive deep into our data from various lenses. Grade level and vertical content teams later rejoined to draft data-informed action steps. Community feedback was also invited during presentations at our November PTO meeting and school council meetings, as well as utilizing our SMORE platform. We are proud to share our true community plan with rigorous goals that are specific and measurable for the upcoming school year and target the actionable areas of improvement our community has identified. The Beechwood Knoll community is a special community to be a part of. Our students come to school each day eager to learn, celebrate one another's cultures, and contribute to a joyful, inclusive environment. We are deeply appreciative of our supportive families and community who partner with us to make BKS a place where every child can thrive. Our educators are the heart of this success. They bring a shared commitment to high academic expectations, deep care for their students, and invaluable years of experience that inspire excellence across our classrooms. Their dedication and collaboration make Beechwood Knoll not just a school, but a vibrant learning community. It is with great pleasure to share that Beechwood Knoll Elementary School received the status as a school of recognition. This status was awarded for 86% of progress toward improvement targets, amounting to the 81st percentile in the Commonwealth. This achievement is attributed to no indicator across all subjects and subgroups for both achievement and growth resulting in a decline measure on the official accountability report. We are so incredibly proud of this accomplishment as a school community, which reflects the hard work of our students and the unwavering dedication of our staff. Our science achievement continues at an outstanding level. On the spring MCAS, Beechwood Knoll 5th graders remarkably achieved the 92nd percentile in the state of Massachusetts. We are proud of this accomplishment annually, and will continue to prioritize maintaining this historic high achievement across MCAS and MAP assessments. Our first school improvement goal is designed to continue to directly target the writing domain. Our goal to increase by 10% in each grade level set last year was rigorous and was exceeded in grades 4 and 5. In grade 3, we also made significant progress with an increase of 7%. Our teams have identified this as our continuous focus, and will target this with explicit cumulative action steps, from dictation in simple sentences in kindergarten to writing well-developed, multi-paragraph essays in grade 5. Beyond this targeted goal, it is evident our data supports that significant literacy and reading progress is consistently made from kindergarten to grade 5 each school year. Most significantly, this includes grade 1 students growing from 38% of students at well below or below benchmark in the fall to only 17% by the spring. This accounts for an astonishing 56% of students above benchmark at the end of first grade. On MCAS, our student achievement increased to a three-year high of the 63rd percentile. This achievement resulted in us exceeding targets set by the Department of Education in achieving four accountability points across the subgroups of all students, growth, lowest-performing students, and high-needs populations. Students also achieved above the state across all question types and domains. Mathematics achievement continues to grow at Beechwood Knoll as well. We exceeded beyond the significant improvements made in the year prior, increasing to the 76th percentile. Across all question types, Beechwood Knoll students in grades 3 through 5 outperformed the state rates. For standard domains, measurement and data was a consistent domain of strength across the three grade levels, with a rate above 60%. From this data, we designed our mathematics goal to continue to grow in the statewide achievement by focusing on the identified domains of geometry in grades 3 and 4, and number and operation fractions, specifically mixed numbers multiplied by a whole in grade 5. On an individual level, high achievement and growth amounted to 69% of students meeting or exceeding their individual growth measures across all tested grade levels on the MAP assessment. Our fall-to-spring growth is a highlight, including an increase of 23 points for grade 2 students. Last year, we designed our third goal to target our English language progression rate. When this rate fell in comparison to previous years, we made significant progress towards this goal of 10%, raising over 4% to 70% of progress towards attaining English language proficiency. We will continue to prioritize increasing this rate by a measure of 5%, mirroring the district, to continue progressing towards our previous achievements. For the Beechwood Knoll vocal data, an extremely positive trend shines through with an overall theme of students feeling respected by adults at our school. This is supported by a remarkable 100% of 4th graders reporting, "My teachers care about me as a person. My teachers help me succeed with my schoolwork when I need help." Additionally, over 90% of these students reported, "Teachers at this school accept me for who I am." We are extremely proud of this achievement. Our students feel valued, supported, and encouraged by the adults in our school community. These results reflect the collective efforts of our staff to foster authentic relationships, provide individualized academic support, and create an inclusive environment where every student feels seen and celebrated. The vocal results also provide strategic areas of action for us at Beechwood Knoll in this coming school year. Respect is the foundation of our beliefs at Beechwood Knoll. Students begin each day by reciting our PBIS pledge to respect ourselves, others, and property on our morning announcements. Our fourth and final goal is to continue to target the specific standard of students respecting each other. We are excited to strengthen this work in partnership with select schools and the Colonel's program, led by our trauma-sensitive schools work group. Student attendance continues to be a focus for the state of Massachusetts and the Quincy Public Schools. We are proud to share that Beechwood Knoll maintained our high achievement with a chronic absenteeism rate of only 2%, placing us within the 90th percentile of attendance measures among students statewide. This is attributed to a true collaborative effort across our teams. Our data team is focusing on daily student attendance and targeting on-time arrivals with our Be On Time Shine initiative, where students are celebrated for arriving on time and starting their academic day with success from the very first bell. Chronic absenteeism data in Aspen is reviewed frequently through our nurse and main offices, so we can work directly with students and their families on an individualized basis, enlisting the help of our attendance and resource officers if needed. We also prioritize communication and transparency by highlighting the Quincy Public Schools' attendance policies in our SMORE newsletter and proudly celebrating the District-wide Attendance Matters Campaign. Meeting the diverse needs of our students academically, socially, and behaviorally remains central to our continuous improvement efforts. Our physical education program expanded its focus on gross motor skill development for our youngest learners, ensuring all students receive support in building coordination and confidence through purposeful movement. And in partnership with our occupational therapy interventionists, grade 1 students are participating in a new Handy Helpers extended-day offering, designed to reinforce fine motor skills, independence, and collaboration through structured hands-on tasks. And new traditions for our families to share in too, with our guidance counselor and media teacher launching the Beechwood Book Club, an extended-day program that welcomes both students and their families to celebrate reading together. To promote a positive school culture and shared accountability for behavior, our PBIS team has revitalized monthly assemblies with a dual approach, alternating between school-wide gatherings and classroom-based celebrations. This model allows for deeper classroom discussions about the expected behaviors, while also nurturing a sense of belonging through collective celebration. This year's assemblies have been strategically aligned to focus areas across the school, such as highlighting respect for others in the cafeteria, with assemblies taking place during lunchtime. We are also launching a PBIS Respect Chain Initiative for the month of December right now. When students show respectful actions towards one another, they will display it on a link to form a paper chain. As this visual representation grows and spreads down our hallway this month, it will be a symbol of collective strength and our shared commitment of fostering a safe, respectful, and caring learning community. In closing, we present to you our Beechwood Knoll School Improvement Plan with great pride as well as gratitude for your continued support. Thank you, school committee, for your extraordinary dedication in supporting the students of the Quincy Public Schools. We welcome your feedback and questions.
Mrs. Hoobley?
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I love your goals. Everything looks great. Your focal, vocal data is amazing. It's really, really great.
Thank you.
Did want to add, the additional crossing support along Fennel Street near Perry Road, I think this is a, an ask you had before. You're still asking. Has any, gotten any better? It's gotten worse.
It has. And the city has been tremendous in their support with that. We've gotten new signs. They've been, they've paved arrows in our drop-off area. So there have been improvements made. It's just a very large intersection, as you know. And so, you know, there is still some concern there, but in collaboration with the city and the superintendent's leadership team, some strides have been made.
Okay. Do we know if the police department's been out to evaluate the area?
They have looked at it. It's really going to be up to the chief to assign additional staff, so.
Okay, but he is aware of, he's aware of our ask for it.
Next year's budget.
Okay.
Is there a crosswalk there?
There is one across Perry, and that There is one across Perry, and that becomes part of it, is that from Perry you have to come all the way to where the crossing guard is, and some try to cross there, and then some families are doing U-turns there, and it just because of the foot traffic and the car traffic, it just becomes a little bit of a safety concern.
It's.
It's spread out. Yeah.
And our resource officers are down there.
They have been, yes, the city's been assigning.
From time to time.
Mm-hmm.
So they're working on it, and they're aware of it.
Okay, all right.
They go assign additional staff.
And we appreciate all the support that the city's offered us. It's helped greatly.
And I also see that the basketball court sunk in at the railing post and has cracked. That's also an ongoing, so.
It hasn't gotten worse, but it is, it is still there. It's just from when the basketball court was originally replaced a few years ago.
Okay. Can we make sure that?
The guy is aware of it.
It's on the list.
It's on the list.
And that, is that outside?
That's outside.
It is.
Yeah, the basketball court. Okay, and the repair to the front flagpole, is that, I'm assuming has gotten worse?
That was new from last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not like a safety concern yet, it's just a concern?
Nope, it's just there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Mr. Guttrow.
Thank you. Excellent plan, great goals, and phenomenal data. The data looks good, you should both be proud. You know, many, many years ago, my kids went there, and so I have a lot of allegiance to being a BKS family, and, you know, I mean, what did you say, the absenteeism, that number is astonishing, but it doesn't, when you walk in the doors there, it doesn't surprise me because people want to be there. And the vibe and the PTO has always been amazing, and, I mean, it's just, I mean, we have so many amazing neighborhood schools, but this is, BKS is the identity to that neighborhood and continues to serve so many families so well. You know, I was the ward council there for a while, and I'm thinking of Perry Road, and I don't remember anybody asking for crossing assistance back in the day, but it's always just chaos at pickup and drop-off, but, yeah, so I was trying to envision what's changed, you know? I don't think anything has changed down there, but you could see the kids wanting to cross right at Perry before that and all of that, but, no, great school. And the leadership that both of you are providing is terrific, and I saw on the front of your plan, five superstar educators that are incredible people that have given so much to that community in QPS, and they deserve the shout-out, and I'm glad you put them on the cover.
Thank you.
Mrs. Peridios?
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Thank you for the plan. It's fantastic, really, just the MCAS data. First of all, the fact that you're, I mean, obviously you're a, you came from the data background. I love data, I love charts, I love graphs, I like paragraphs too, but I love charts and graphs, and I could see this in like 50 different ways, and also you saw it in 50 different ways. Do you know what I mean? You really got deep into what needed to be done, and I like how, because your achievement's so high, you didn't just kind of say, well, we're just going to go, you know, X number of RIT points. You got into the, you know, you picked different things out. You picked geometry, and even on your vocal data, picking a specific question, students respect each other in my school, which is super important. And even though you had a good baseline number, just trying to push that and achieve a difference in a specific area, I think because you've achieved overall, you can kind of get in there and pick and choose kind of the things that you want to bring up. So I thought that was fantastic, and that came from that deep dive into the data. So thank you for doing that, but I'm not surprised, but it's just, it's great. Great class sizes, congratulations on the School of Recognition accomplishment, it's really, really great. I had another question. Your chronic absenteeism actually went, it actually went the other way to get to 2%. 2% is like, last year was .7, which I don't even understand, I don't even know how that's possible, but it went from .7 to 2. So you're doing phenomenal. Don't take that as any kind of, oh gosh, we really need to circle back on that. You're doing great on that. Like Mr. Guttrow said, everyone wants to be there, so that's really great, and thank you for pushing for safety on drop-off and pickup on that. And thank you for coming back this week. I know you were scheduled for last week, so thank you for clearing your schedule for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's an incredible, incredible recognition, and well-deserved, and please thank all of your staff for us. I can't get over the science MCAS.
I know.
I mean, 72% meeting or exceeding, 70, who's teaching science there?
It's a vertical team. Mrs. Karen Kelleher is 5th grade, and then we have Laura Mulcahy and Erin Gary in grades three and four, and it's tremendous, and it starts from kindergarten up, yeah.
Amazing. I've never seen anything like that, 72%.
It's remarkable, thank you.
Wonderful, it really is wonderful. So congratulations to all of you. Your plan is wonderful, your school is wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I really appreciate your whole staff, so thank you.
I want to add one thing.
Mr. Hoober.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I love that your community representative is Dr. Yakubian, so. Shout-out to Dr. Yakubian.
It was his honor to be a part of it. Thank you.
Motion to accept by Mr. Burgoli, seconded by Mrs. Hoobley. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, thank you so much for waiting.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. Are we all ready? Yeah, okay. It's a privilege to present the Marymount School Improvement Plan for this school year. I would like to thank the school committee, Mayor Koch, Superintendent Malvey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Perkins, as well as the SLT for their constant support throughout the year. I would also like to thank the students, the staff, the PTO, the school council, and the families at Marymount. It's a truly wonderful place to be every day. There is a strong sense of community and a commitment to supporting the whole child. Through our extensive extended-day offerings and family engagement, the school fosters an environment where students feel known, supported, and inspired to explore their interests. Students have opportunities to pursue hands-on learning in areas such as STEAM, Lego Robotics, Crazy Eights Math, and coding, while also exploring artistic and social interests through Creative Kids, the Marymount Musical, the Stitch Squad, and Walking Club. Some programs are designed for multiple grade levels, encouraging cross-age collaboration and strengthening relationships among students. Equally central to the school's positive climate is our strong partnership with families. Our communication is proactive and consistent with year-long newsletters and reminders shared through Smore and School Messenger to ensure families feel informed and connected. The school and PTO work together to host various events throughout the school year, from the kindergarten popsicle social, trunk or treat, the Fun Run, and International Night that bring our families together, strengthen our community ties, and celebrate diversity. Events like the Veterans Day Assembly, Winter Concert, Heroes in History, Spring Musical Showcase, and the Grade Five Promotion honor tradition and student work and progress, further contributing to a sense of pride and belonging. As a school, we've had the opportunity to reflect, grow, and set clear goals for the school year. With guidance from the district, Mr. Rogan and I worked closely with our staff to create this plan. It is grounded in the belief that our students can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally when provided with strong instruction, targeted support, and an inclusive school environment. I feel it's important for me to highlight the strong progress our students made last year. Our early literacy and MAP growth were excellent. Student exceeded MAP national norms in reading, math, and science. Our students outperformed the state with their MCAS performance in nearly every subject and grade. Our English language learners showed exceptional progress, meeting growth targets, and we also exceeded our target for chronic absenteeism. These results reflect the hard work of our students, the dedication of our staff, and our strong partnership with families. This year, our school improvement plan again centers on the key areas of English language arts, mathematics, science, and social-emotional learning. In English language arts, our goal is to ensure that students demonstrate measurable growth in reading and achievement gains in writing. In mathematics, our focus is on deepening conceptual understanding and problem-solving skills. In science, we are committed to expanding curiosity and inquiry-based learning. And in social-emotional learning, we are excited to implement kernels, a program designed to support and strengthen students' social skills for learning and life. Weekly kernel lessons in every classroom will provide opportunities for students to build self-awareness, empathy, and resilience, skills that are foundational to both personal well-being and academic success. We've really leaned into the Colonel's program this year already, and we have intentionally carved out time to focus on social skills. This week, for example, the entire school is focusing on different ways to solve conflict. So not only are teachers scheduling time for lessons, so are our specialists and our interventionists. We're also highlighting key points of the lessons on morning announcements, all ways to help students become more skilled in recognizing feelings and dealing with conflict. Our action steps are specific and manageable. A meaningful shift we've made this year is by organizing targeted action steps by grade level and by intervention rather than school-wide. By creating action steps for each grade, we're able to be more intentional and more responsive to our students' needs. Kindergarten students do not exactly need what 5th grade students need, and 5th grade students do not exactly need what 2nd grade students need. Our plan addresses that in reality. This shift also strengthens our culture of collaboration. This approach reinforces our commitment to high expectations. By naming targeted steps for each grade, we are setting a clear standard. Every student can grow, and every grade level has a path towards stronger outcomes. I'm confident that this plan will help us build stronger students and thinkers and a stronger school community. Thank you for your time and commitment to our school community, and I welcome any questions.
Any questions? Mrs. Peridios?
Like, we saved you till last, we had you come back, we have to give you some feedback. I think you're doing fantastic. The plan is great, your achievement is great. I even think, again, you fall into the, you're doing so great, so now, looking at your goals versus how you achieved, especially in math, I think that your goals could have even been a little more aggressive on that math show. I'd like to see, I always like to see, like, really aggressive goals, but I think that's, I assume you worked with the team, similar to some other?
We worked with the team. We also used the norms that the MAP has established, so we tried to target those goals, using those norms to meet them or be a little bit above them. But listening in to the other presentations, I had a feeling that I was, I knew that you were going to say, "We played it safe." Yeah.
I always, I'm never going to slap a hand for trying to be aggressive on that, but I think, but the achievement's there, do you know what I mean? So I think that's great, and again, kind of, or using those, that line again, that individual growth projection goals, that might be another way of getting to that too, because you do have such high achievement that it's hard. I think you're, breaking it down by grade level is one way of kind of getting in there, but once you hit that high level, you know, it makes it more difficult to kind of keep going with that, so. But I think overall, your vocal data was fantastic. You know, 100% of the kids thought, "Teachers care about me as a person, they're proud of me when I work hard, and they support me even when my work isn't the best." Having 100%.
We were really happy with those results.
Yeah, no, obviously you have a great staff, you have a great, you know, group of educators, fantastic work there. And, you know, your chronic absenteeism, again, similar to BKS, went up, but it went from 3.3 to 5.1, which is still phenomenal, so great job there. Can I ask a little bit about the security cameras that you put on your facility needs?
Just one in the backs, the back of the school.
Okay.
That was the one that I believe we have. We don't have any in the back of the school. We often find that we have our outdoor classrooms, so that's just a concern that we would like to keep an extra eye on that space.
For sure. Yeah, no, I think that's valid, and we can work on that in the facilities subcommittee. Yeah, I think that's great. It looks fantastic, and overall, the kids look happy and safe, and they're doing great. So great job. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Your vocal survey was amazing. It really was amazing. It is a great community, a great school. The school is such a big part of that community. I had the pleasure of attending the Fun Run. I didn't think it was much fun, it was freezing out there. They were having fun, but it was freezing, absolutely freezing, and they still had fun, and they still ran like crazy, so. I know that was a great big fundraiser and a fun fundraiser for you guys, and it went very, very well.
It was.
What a community, what a community, really. It's wonderful, and the school just being the center of it is great. So thank you very much for all you do and all your staff do for those families.
Thank you.
And I would entertain a motion by Mr. Burgoli to accept the plan, seconded by Mrs. Hoobley. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming in and.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.